The email on the 14th, just to draft, to talk through the concepts of strategic planning. It's basically a work plan for the county. The way we work here and the way I've always worked is that everybody has a work plan.
All right, it's a simple plan with items on what are you doing. Then we check in a couple times a year.
Items that are on a list to do, some of them come off, some of them move in priority based on grant funding, that kind of thing. And then we kind of look at what do we get accomplished at the end of the calendar year? So strategic planning, well I have one. Well, it defines a common vision so that the council as an entity and not as individuals can come up with a traceable, trackable, communicatable vision for the county. It establishes the areas the organization will focus on, so that is a directive. It's loud and clear to the staff about what your vision is and so that all of our work daily goes to try to build that ultimate vision. It guides decision making at all levels of the staff. And it's very important once we get through this because every staff member has a role, a very important role in completing these projects. And they need to know that the work that they do has value to meeting your goals and pleasing the organization. It's called engagement, and we want employees to be engaged and know that their work is important. And then finally provides a method of accountability and transparency, and I'll talk a little bit more about that once we get all these projects and initiatives all sorted out and then we'll do it by goal. And then we'll do a master spreadsheet with the item, its priority, who's in charge of it, likely completion date and all that. And then we can sort of track our performance each year. So here are the basic ones you folks have probably been involved in this kind of talk before, but the vision is where do you see yourselves in three to five years? That may be very different for all of us sitting around this table, right? But that's something you need to think about and we can have more discussion about that. And then what do you want to see in the community as a result of your service and your action and this plan? Community principles, this is, okay, that's sort of where you'd like to go. Community principles are how do we do our work? Not just get the work done. We don't lie, cheat and steal to get the work done and check the box, right? It's just as important as how we do our work as what we do. So community principles are sort of your basic ethical principles that you agree and pledge to work by to complete these items. The mission is why does the organization exist? We've had a mission for several years, it's been the same mission. It seems to always fit with each council that comes through. And then goals, what are your targets in terms of your strategic priorities? I have taken the liberty of throwing some basic ones out there based on your work and my discussions with you and my work with you thus far. They may be totally off and you can mess with all those, but I just wanted to show you how it all fits together. Then you can go back and you can change it to whatever flavor you like. And then finally, the objectives are what we're talking about, our tasks, our work projects, our initiatives, our programs, and what needs to be done over. We like to do it annually so that we have long-term projects, but we touch those annually so everybody's familiar with what we're doing. All right, so the vision, and this is a lot of the work that Ms. Wagner did with the comprehensive plan. The vision for the county and these other items I want to talk about were, and the community principles, were all established through the comprehensive master planning effort 2018. We're getting close to having to redo all of that, all right? So you may think, oh, 2018 was quite a ways off. I think you'll see the relevancy of a lot of these things are very similar to your current day thinking, but this will all happen again here fairly swiftly. Lisa, when will we have to get into that process?
Well, it probably needs to start in 2027 because it should be completed by 2028.
Okay, so 2028 you get the chance to do all this again. And the beauty of that is it's not only your input, but it's outside the organization too. You invite residents to come in, give them some bare bones, what you're thinking of priorities, and let them vote on things. And you could do community surveys, which was done the last time, and that's very helpful too. We asked a lot of questions in a community survey, got good response. There were a whole lot of people that responded that admitted that they hadn't lived here for a few years, right? And what they saw, so it was very helpful.
So what timing of the year in '18 did y'all roll out the comprehensive plan? Was it mid-year, beginning of the year?
End of the year.
End of the year?
In November 2018.
So if we start in '27, that gives us a little over a year to start prepping and tuning up the...
Yes, because we like to have community meetings and like Amy said, do the community surveys and get community engagement.
Okay.
We also had a good experience with the U-Haul Broad River Plain District as part of the sort of touching the five-year mark of the current plan where we did some things that were new to us. We did phone polling and things like that and touched hundreds of people. And so, that's just, I'm digressing, but that's kind of fun. We can get into a lot of that and that should be good to have a lot of public input. All right, but here is, these are the things that came out of that effort. "The vision at that time was the identity of Jasper County is intrinsically rooted in the beauty and diversity of the natural environment, rich legacy of history and the spirit of our people. Even as the county grows and develops, we will maintain our connection to the waters, marshes and lands that sustain us. Jasper County will work together as a community to reverse economic disparities, address our challenges, maximize our opportunities and ensure all residents have access to high quality of life. Jasper County will prosper economically, physically and socially." That's what came out of that effort. Here are the community principles. How do we do that? Well, while we do that, pursue those things, we protect and fall astray the rural character of Jasper County. We take pride in its land through stewardship, historic, natural and cultural resources. Ms. DeCoursey is noting that, okay. Support economic development initiatives to provide jobs, education and training in our community. Prioritize maintenance of, this is an important one, maintenance of existing infrastructure over development of new infrastructure. And again, the guiding principle to grow the municipalities and put growth in places that are most suitable to serve the development. And then finally, embrace collaboration with other governmental leaders, education providers, non-government organizations, the community to address community challenges and embrace opportunities particularly related to education, equity and leadership, which is a lot of what you're doing, I think, when you're talking about your shared services discussion. All right, here is the county's mission statement and has been for a number of years, "To provide efficient government services and manage growth while protecting Jasper County's rich environmental heritage and quality of life." We've had a lot of talk when we did that about the different terms between effective and efficient and all those types of things. And that was very interesting because the gist of it was do the best you can with the limited resources you have to be compliant and safe. And it wasn't really going beyond that. It was trying to continue to provide a rural level of service and not enhanced services. So that's all up for discussion as you move forward. Here are some draft goals that I threw together in discussion with the chairman several months ago. He had a speaking engagement and they were talking about goals. And so, we talked about these items as something that we could communicate when you were just coming together as a council as where I thought you were headed based on your actions and some of the discussions I've had with you. All these are fair game to change, add whatever you wanted to do. But, and he made the caveat in his speech that, you know, these were not official goals, but this is kind of where they were headed. Promoting fiscal accountability and transparency, there are a number of tasks that the staff has done to try to help with that and a number of ideas that you have shared with us and requests that you've made to try to do that. I think that's kind of a no-brainer in what you're trying to do. Conduct community outreach and leadership development. This is all about building capacity. That's both within the organization, but primarily outside the organization. It's part of what we have struggled with over the years is the county government has been the answer to everything. Everyone has come to ask questions if there was not a service in the community, if there was not proper resources. It was always come to the government, they'll try to figure it out and help you. That's sometimes works, but as we grow, that may not always be the answer. So building community leadership development outside the organization in civic groups, in the pipeline of people who want to serve on boards and commissions, all those kinds of things. I know that's something Mr. Kemp is very interested in. And as you know, he attends every meeting and tries to connect everyone to try to build that network, which is tremendously important. You all can use your roles as council members to do a lot of that work, that informal leadership and building the community that staff cannot do, could never do. Provide growth management and organizational development. That is, you were thrown right into that with the U-Haul Broad River stuff and you have seen a lot of that with annexations and economic development. So growth management is something that will always be something that the county needs to worry about. And then organizational development to keep up with that. How are we adapting to the changes in growth? Should we think differently about how we do it, looking at other organizations, how they've done it? Maybe is the right answer, maybe it isn't. And then you spend a lot of time on public safety services. That's sort of been a theme over the last 10 years of the council championing the fact that they believe that that is their primary responsibility to provide for the health, life and safety of citizens. And so, they want to make sure that they're providing public safety services that are to the greatest extent they can within their budget. And so, you all came right in at the point when the chief was trying to redo his fleet. And that was a big discussion then, so that's why that became up here sort of a possibility of one of your goals. All right, we're gonna, I think, pause here, Mr. Chairman, if it's okay. And the objectives and project initiatives that we went through with you in January, we're gonna go back through them by department of what are we doing, what do we not do, what do we, what has been added, all those kind of things. We can do that individually and you can have some good dialogue with everyone here, the staff members. But, and there it is again, I know it's kind of hard to remember, but you have four division directors. Ms. Burgess is the administrative services division, that's finance, assessor's office, business licenses, register of deeds, delinquent tax. Can I get them all? Okay. We can add another one there, that's good. No? Oh, procurement, yeah. Her finance is splitting up now into different things. Development services division is currently vacant. That was formally held by Mr. Danny Lucas. And as you know, we have a new person that's going to be joining us in that role. Engineering services is Mr. Jim Monarchy. And he's doing a bang-up job, you've seen a lot of his stuff, and he's going to go through that again with the CIP and something he's working on. And emergency services division is Chief Wells. So those are what I call the big four. They run the divisions and multiple departments underneath them. There are also three individual departments that report to me directly, and those are human resources, the detention center and information technology. So we can go through their projects too. According to the agenda, this is where we should probably take a break and we can slip into the financial information if that's okay.
Yeah, we'll take a quick recess real quick.
Yeah, we'll take a quick recess, real quick.
So we take their back, a little bit, on their back.
So.
I don't.[164.12]
Be like, uh, firefighter to equal sixty-six percent.
Correct. The, the timing of that is, they were all done in, in one month. In this case, they were done in September. Thirty-three hundred dollars. So, so that's why that, you see that it looks a little bit skewed, but it, as we go through the year, it will even out. And so, um, they're basically at the end of this report, like I said, it goes through each department. And then at the end of this report, it totals everything up so that you see the total budgeted amount is sixty-six thousand oh sixty-seven eight forty. Again, we don't have any budget amendments yet, but we will. And then at, it shows that year-to-date, we've collected six more, six million four hundred and seventy-eight thousand one hundred and sixteen dollars of revenue. And we've expended, which is only ten percent of the budgeted revenue. But that makes sense if, because our biggest and largest part of the revenue is our property taxes, which we don't start collecting until the property tax bills go out, which is generally in mid to late October. So we start collecting taxes beginning in November. And December, it kind of, it kind of increases each month. They're all due mid-January. So that's why you'll see, um, it'll escalate or increase and our largest revenue will be in those months. And so by the end of January, we will have, we should have, uh, received or accumulated most of our revenue for the year. What you see now is generally, uh, automobile taxes. And there is a department, this Department One Seventy, which is general revenues. And that includes a lot of the tax revenues. There you go. So if you go up one more page on that. Mr. Fulham. Could you go one more page up to show the? There you go. So it, that first line item there is property taxes. And that is generally real property taxes. So we have budgeted thirty-seven million two hundred and forty-one thousand five hundred. You can see that we've only collected a small amount, six thousand one hundred and thirty-nine dollars. So basically it shows zero percent because six thousand and thirty-seven million is miniscule. Again, the largest part is automobile taxes and, um, delinquent taxes. Because automobile taxes are collected monthly throughout the year, based on whenever someone's license tag expires. And delinquent taxes, the, the collection of, for those starts in March, the middle of March, when the tax rolls, any unpaid taxes roll over to delinquent. So from March until basically November, right before the tax sale or end of October, any property taxes that are collected are delinquent taxes. Then we have the tax sale, the tax bills go out, and then the treasurer, that's the tax collector taking the delinquent taxes. And then November, the treasurer starts taking the current year tax payments for property taxes.
So delinquent taxes from one fiscal year, they, how does that, it just depends on when the delinquent taxes are paid to where they're deposited to the, whichever fiscal year that they're in?
Correct. If they, say if someone got a bill this year and they didn't pay it at all, then in March it would roll over to the delinquent tax collector. And they would have to go to the delinquent, to the tax collector's office, not the treasurer's office, to make that payment.
Okay.
And, and then she remits those payments every month back to the treasurer. So, but she's the one collecting anything that's considered delinquent.
Okay. And that just makes everything whole with the way we forecast things with taxes as revenue?
Right, right. So, and then there's some other, as you can see, there's some other, we get other taxes, motor carrier taxes, um, our local option sales tax, and the local option sales tax credit are what we get in lieu. When we give someone a local option sales tax credit on their tax bill, that is the amount of local option sales tax that is collected by the state, literally sales tax, the one percent sales tax. And then that is remitted to the county and to the municipalities. So that's our revenue. That replaces this, uh, what we give as a credit on the property tax bills.
And just for clarification, those that maybe watch it, that's separate from the other transportation sales tax and the school sales taxes. This is the South Carolina additional, or one percent that's figured into the taxes in Jasper County, correct?
Yes. And there, because it's local option sales tax, sometimes it's a little confusing with the local option transportation sales tax. But this is based on the fact that, um, we give that credit. We have, we have to give that credit to the homeowners on their property tax bills. So, and then there's some small amounts. Again, we have some miscellaneous revenue that we've collected. So overall, as I said, the overall revenue thus far, and this is just the first quarter, is only six mil, about six point five million or ten percent.
Mr. Furts, what do you mean by miscellaneous revenue? For instance?
For instance, uh, sometimes like the, we might get a FEMA, sometime, it takes years to get a FEMA reimbursement for a storm. So when we get that, we, we take that to miscellaneous revenue. And that, that's because we don't really have any place to put that, other than as a miscellaneous, it doesn't, because it's two or three years after the fact, we don't have any expenditures to apply it to, so we take it in as miscellaneous revenue. It's just sort of odd or unusual items that we don't budget for or plan for.
All right. Well, thank you. I just want, so if people are watching would understand what that is. Thank you.
You're welcome. And then, um, the expenditures were actually, like I said earlier, at the first quarter, you would anticipate if everything was spent evenly, that we would be about twenty-five percent, at twenty-five percent of our budget. And right now, we're at twenty-one percent. So we've expended thirteen million six hundred and forty-five thousand, which also includes encumbrances of four hundred and thirty-three, so, four hundred and thirty-three thousand. So, um, that's just a general explanation of what you will get. Your October one will be on the, on its way very soon, but I didn't want to add to, I didn't want to create any confusion one to the other. So we have this one, and I will, I will tell you, um, when you get your October one, there's a, a handy-dandy little AI thing that, um, will analyze it. So it's an experiment, but you'll have like a summary for the, each department, what the budget it was, how much it spent, what, et cetera. And you can, I would appreciate your feedback if that, if you find that helpful, or if you want to see any sort of changes to it when you get the October one.
Now, a couple of questions. Are these posted to the website whenever they're?
No, these are not posted, uh, primarily because, one, they're subject to change. Um, and two, they're not audited. And so what we post, what we give you today for September thirtieth, if we had to go back in and make some kind of adjustment or journal entry for it, it would be completely different. So we don't really post this out there.
Thank you. I mean, with a lot of the folks that I get hit up with quite often, it probably wouldn't hurt to put it out there, just have that caveat on there, this may not be an actual reflection number, subject to change or something. Just something tangible to see with our transparency, uh, tab that we have on the website.
So, well, we can, we can look at how to do that without creating confusion. As, you know, like at the end of the year, we passed out Septen, uh, not September, June thirtieth financial statement. And there was many adjustments that needed to be made, and that created a lot of confusion. So I, but we can look at doing something like that. Yes, sir.
Should we do something like the AI tools?
Well, it's a, just a summary, but it just summarizes it as a report. I attempted to do it for this one just this morning, and there's some odd, I have to review it. There's some odd numbers that it generated, but the October one has, um, I've reviewed that one already. So I'm prepared to send that one to you. It's just an AI-generated report.
And I don't, I don't want to jump around, because I see one of the things is, is in progress. But I do have a question for you, and it, and it predates you, the way that some of the, the budget, um, works here with the different departments and different things. What would be the odds of consolidating those into, like the divisions that we have here? And then you have your subcategories in them. For instance, uh, you've got, you had the Levy up there before, everything falls under the, um, transparency services division and the breakouts. Everything that encompasses in that, because sometimes in the budget, you have to go back and forth and look around for things to where they're, they're not all grouped together with the division, if that makes sense. And I know we're looking at different software. Is that something that we could?
So, um, I'm not really sure. Could you give me a little more detail what you're looking for? Like you would prefer to see all of the, all of the fire rescue division grouped together?
Well, you, you.
I think he's talking about the budget format and the coding of the numbers that you have, and they've been set up over years, over the years. Um, for instance, the airport, right, was set up as a new department, and that's at the very end of the budget, right, of the budget report. That's your financial software, and that's how you track it, and your numbers are, are in your head and all that stuff. I think what the chairman is saying is, is there any way for us to have sort of a popular budget, uh, presentation that shows, uh, the budget, uh, in a form that mirrors our organizational chart?
So we do have something that we're working on with a, a software, uh, company now. And we're hoping to get that rolled out for this budget year. Um, and then you can, you can, you can look at the different categories, and then you can sort of drill down into it. So I think that might be what you're talking about. And if that doesn't suit, then we can revise that with their help to get something that would be suitable. So there is something out there.
And Andy kind of nailed it with the org chart, everything that falls under the, the divisions. Like with Jim, he has roads, bridges, public works, all those. And it would be everything that, that's encapsulated in his division.
So we do that for them as well. So we'll send out a, for, for Jim or for Chief Wells, we'll send out a report that has each of their departments listed, and then it just totals their division. So we could also do that for you, so that you see what they see, rather than just, um, every single department. We can, we can change that now.
Okay, thank you.
If you have a similar intention, you want to try that, or you look forward to still producing another, uh,
you never told me, so the other software, I, I think we all collectively agree, getting a better software that streamlines operational efficiency would be amazing here.
This is basically, it's, it's not necessarily operational efficiencies, it's viewing it. It's, it's having it as a public presentation, so that you don't see all these tiny little numbers. That's what this software does. So.
It's a public case of.
Right. If you look at Beaufort County's budget online, this is what, that is the same software.
Is this a different company that we're looking at, or the same company but just upgrading?
It's not, it's this, we're going to keep this.
Okay.
This is our accounting software.
Right.
This is just a company that we have contracted with to have a budget presentation online.
Okay.
So, so you can see, Mr. Fulham's pulling up theirs, but it's the same, um.
Do you feel like our accounting system, I know we've talked about this publicly, and I know you guys like it, but do you think it's appropriate for a growing county as fast as we're growing?
I think the accounting software.
Do you think we need to grow, upgrade the cabinet system?
I think at the moment that we're fine with it. I think that it's, it's suitable for what we do. But there, this same company has other, um, we're currently looking at the different modules for the code enforcement, for business license. So that's a newer model of what this, but it'll be integrated into our accounting software. So what we do is, for what we do is fine. I think, I know that, um, Mr. Skinner, the treasurer, has not been happy with the software he uses, which is not the same as what we use for accounting.
Why would he not use the same as what you guys have?
Because this software is not for tax collection.
Okay.
His is purely for tax collection. It has all of the properties in it. Um, the assessor uses it to put all of the properties, the property maps in it, how much the assessed value is, what district they're in, what tax, if you collect a hundred dollars and they live in Hardyville, then what percentage of that one hundred dollars goes to Hardyville? What percentage of that one hundred dollars goes to the school district and the school bond, and to the county, and to the county bond? So that's a very different
System.
system than what we have.
So the question would be, just a question, um, would it be better to have a system that would integrate everything?
I.
Or is there something like that?
I'm not sure there is such a thing. And they're very different. They're very different purposes, because what the treasurer collects is not really at that, the point he collects it, it's not the revenue of the county. Until he gives the county its portion of what he's collected,
Yeah.
then that becomes the county's revenue.
Okay.
And that's when we, that's what we start dealing with, with the, with the software that we use.
So do the softwares interface with these, each other for interoperability, or?
So they can, they have not. I have been working with, um, I have been working with the software provider, the treasurer, stat, the, the QS one, with them to get a, uh, what we can do is give them the general ledger accounts that would normally, we would record that revenue in, which is what we do now manually in the finance department. We can upload it. Once we get the, uh, account numbers associated with QS one, it can just be uploaded into the, this current software. So I'm still working with them to try to get that in.
And there seems to be, with, there are a lot of people with discrepancies with their taxes, don't want to run around it here, but, um, making sure that we have something that's, A, efficient, interoperable, um, and not, uh, it's something kind of current, up to date. I don't know all the different things I've heard, the pros, the cons, the everything with it. But it, I think it's something we really need to look at with that type of software, because it does cross pathways with assessor, auditor, and treasurer.
And tax collector.
And tax collector.
And they all have to integrate.
Correct. So if we could look at something that's, uh, that we could streamline, um, that works with everybody, not reinvent the wheel, but something that might be better, I think that'd be worth looking into.
So I'm, I'm happy to do that, but there's, like I have said in the past, there's many departments that utilize it, and they all have to be on board. And it's probably a two-year process, just to get it in, just to get it in, you know, up to
Correct.
to have the information, get people trained, all of that, so it's not an overnight process.
Absolutely.
No matter what you do.
And I think we probably just engage stakeholders from each department to, to see what we can do better or what we can do to maybe enhance what we got, so.
And that's part of this, the conversations I've had with, um, QS one as far as just being able to upload the, the information into this current accounting system, because, uh, I don't know if it has been around for a while, but I was unaware of it until just recently. So we're looking at ways to make it more efficient. The tax collector has looked at ways, we're working on getting her information the same way that we can upload it into the accounting system, so that we're not, there's not a manual entry process. So we're, we're looking at it, and I believe Mr. Fulham has the, what, um, this is Beaufort County's budget.
Here, go, the, the, I've heard it's important, but is it sort of a summary about what you see is the experience of the current day? Maybe you should give a graph and charts about the budget in each department. If on either of the chair, you can, you can, uh, give a chart of what's done as a separate, you can talk about the version.
And I will say that Beaufort County just won an award from GFOA for their budget, for this budget presentation, public budget award.
So this is something we're, we're trying to do.
This is, this is where we like to be. Yes, sir. We're working on it now.
And, and, uh, is it, is it, is it, sorry?
Go ahead.
It is, uh, this is separate from this financial software. And I really think that that has been the problem that you all have had to deal with. You all are like a staff person, having to get in the weeds in the detail of the financial software, which is not really where you need to be at a policy level. You need to have that, like that, that you can see and work with. And so does the public. So that's why we're trying to make that, that adjustment, so that we have, we have both. Uh, this is our working document. That is the public display document.
And just one other thing, I do like this. I've never seen this, um, until this morning, but I do like that. And if, if folks take a look at it, and if folks have any questions beyond what's grafted and charted on here, they can reach out to finance at any time, and y'all be glad to answer those questions for them.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Jim, did you have?
I just have the one that I, um, have with me, but it's the detailed sheet that the department has yet, so that we can look at our budget. This has all my departments that I manage and part of this, and, and so we can be over my edge.
Yeah. Yeah, so one time I had to look up the, uh, I looked up code enforcement, and it took me a while to kind of get, thank you, appreciate it. But, uh, is this, do you want to hold on to this?
Yeah.
So just for, you know, we talked about a line item budget at some point, instead of like, uh, you know, to explain each category, which I think could be volumes of information and might be overwhelming to, to get to that point. But just to understand, you know, what's, what would be spent where, and I was trying to find something in code enforcement. It took me a while to kind of get it, to find that, and it's kind of buried under like three different divisions. Um, and then the, the beginning page, which has all the department numbers, I think it's indexed by two, two numbers in the very beginning of the budget. If that was, if that could correspond with page numbers, that would help a lot too, which is better than the process.
Uh, so you want a, like a table of contents?
Yeah, exactly. You know, just to make things quicker, because when everything goes in place, then we got, I want to go to the budget. I mean, it's good, it's a great budget, and you did a good, good job, even they got the award for the twenty-twenty-four GFOA, uh, which was great to see. But just sometimes the times, like I just kind of shy away from digging into something, because I'm looking for like simplicity.
I, I think on the ordinance, we probably wouldn't do a table of contents, but we can certainly, in the, in a document that we hand out, we could do that.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, just to make it easier for you.
Sure, absolutely. Any other questions on that? Okay, um, you're, you're welcome. Do we want to go into any of these other things now, Mr. Fulham, or do you want to wait?
Um, yes, ma'am. You have two other lines, you have projects, you have.
Yes, sir. So, um, I guess we'll do the project transaction report. So that is just a summary listing of the reports, some of the active reports that we have, um, or new, or newly completed or still active. Um, we have the two fifty-two Russell Street outfit, which is pretty much completed. There might be a few minor expenditures still going through that.
Could you just go, uh, tell us what these things are?
Sure, sure.
I'm not sure what the, uh.
Two fifty-two Russell Street outfit is the new IT building that's across from the courthouse, the second. It's a two-story yellow building. Um, the Cusahatchee Fire Station is the fire station that we are hopefully one day going to build. So right now we have a project and some expenditures for it, but, um, it's in the architectural phase right now. And then we have a, a recent project that we just actually did the bidding for and actually awarded the bid. And that's the Station Thirty garage door replacement. Station Thirty is the fire station directly behind the emergency services building. And we're replacing the roll-up doors on those. And then there's the, um, one that's recent, uh, that was completed, is the Tillman, uh, Fire Station. That replacement of that fire station, where we had the, actually purchased a mobile home and then had the new, um, apparatus bay, I guess, for lack of a better word, or cover installed there. So those are just, uh, I'm not sure if there's any more on the summary, is that?
No, I was just going to say, the largest amount of, of, that ever had, uh, few projects.
There are very few.
And I will back, right now.
Now, a quick question with all this, we've got projects, they're listed, and then kind of the summary of those, and maybe you're about to go to the next
Yes, sir.
page with that, but. Okay, this is the details.
That's the detail for each of those projects. Yes, sir.
Never mind, I will hush until you keep talking.
So.
Just can I interrupt you a second, Kim?
Sure.
The, uh, it's the site of the former Cusahatchee Community Center, it's surrounded with yellow tape. It's got forty-five there, it's also hazardous. Um, I don't know where we can, what, what we can do with that. Um, I mean, we're, we're.
We're working on that, sorry, to get that removed, because what, what is, the issue we're having is when they did remove the debris, our lawnmowers and everything cannot go in there and level that area. So when it brought to my attention, we taped it off, when you seen it when you last time you came up there. So we're working on getting that removed now, so.
It's not hazardous materials, it's just debris for mowers.
It's brought, it's big pieces of rock that will tear up our blades. So we just have to get, uh, somebody to come and just pave that up and do a, a sweep, swoop, to clear out the big debris zone.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir. So you have to hire, you don't need to hire a special environmental company to do this?
I'll probably just make some arrangements with, uh, Jeff in the next few weeks, um, as things are slowing down with them. And I know they have a shortage staff right now, so we'll take care of that.
All right. And how do we get that project on this project list? Is it possible to?
That, that really doesn't qualify as a project per se. It's going to, it's going to be in-house, it's going to be a day. I'm assuming it's going to be our equipment. It's not some sort of project that we would outsource to anyone. So it's not a long-term project.
Okay, thanks.
Oh, the, the actual.
You were talking about the actual building, weren't you?
Oh, yeah, the building will be.
On this, on the project list, but it won't go on this.
It won't be until we actually have
Do the architectural.
Have an architect, have a contract, something along the way.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, um, so what this shows you is the, so I don't, I didn't bring these particular ones, but this is, uh, so when we code something for a project, so right where I've highlighted it, where it says two, two fifty-two Russell up, Russell outfit, then right below it, that number, it says oh one oh dash oh ninety-five dash thirty-seven fifty-two capital outlay. That is the actual account code and department that that line item, that particular item was coded to. So that was, that was, uh, one of the payments to the contractor, Johnson Lau Construction, Inc. So anything that's listed under that particular account code was charged to that account code, but it's accumulated under this project name as well. So when we enter it into the system to make the payment, we're going to code it to Department Ninety-five, and we're going to code it to thirty-seven fifty-two, which is a capital outlay code. And we're going to also say the project name, which is two fifty-two Russell outfit. So when you get these reports going forward, you're going to, for this particular project, we've spent three hundred and twenty-eight thousand one hundred and forty-eight dollars and forty-nine cents total. So. So that's the, the total of that particular project, right there. It says three twenty-eight, I know it's hard to see. But that's everything that's been coded to, to that oh ninety-five thirty-seven fifty-two for this project.
And that's the grand total of everything there?
That's the grand total for that particular project.
Now, what was the budgeted prior to this, before the three twenty-eight one forty-eight?
This came in slightly under budget. Um, we got some, we got a change order back. I think it was eighty, was it eighty thousand? I might be, that might be another one. So far, Johnson Lau has come in under budget for just about every project they've, they've done for us. I would have to go back and look to see what our contracted amount was for this, but I know that this was under budget.
Okay.
So, um.
Are these like cost-plus jobs, or when you say under budget, are they cost-plus with the budget numbers they're working with?
This was. This this project was actually brought to council, and you guys approved a number and a scope of work. All right, and that scope of work was accomplished, and we did it for less than what was brought to you guys.
Man, that was a political answer right there, so.
I played this game once.
Yeah, you had a budget number and that they must have put together.
They they put the budget number together.
So it must have been a cost plus, right? I mean, that's the only way you're going to, if it was a fixed contract, you'd have to pay the whole thing out, correct?
There was a couple of optional items in there.
Okay.
Okay, and as we went through, we said, no, we're not going to do that portion of the project because.
I got you.
We're going to take the shutters off. They had a price to leave the shutters on and paint them.
Okay.
We said, no, we're better off removing the shutters. They they're not a functional item. They were decorative, and we saved money by doing that.
So you'd be eat out some of those things just to save the taxpayer money?
Correct.
All right, thank you, Jim, I appreciate it.
So this is this is the project that we did for the Tillman, replacement of the Tillman Fire Station. Again, you can see that this was coded to 0100463752. Now, sometimes there might be other account codes that are charged, and then you would see those listed in this project as well. So this one ended up being, this one, the total for this one ended up being $156,924, round. And everything that went into that was coded to that same account code. So if you were looking at the budget performance report, and this was finished in March of 2025. So if you looked at this in April of 2025, and you looked at this particular account, then there would be $156,000 in 463752 in the performance report under 46, under that line item, and it relates to this project. So you kind of have to know both of them.
So and that basically, that falls under whatever, I guess, fire rescue.
Fire rescue, yes, sir.
So I do have a question, and what I'm accustomed to, that all CIP projects, CIP has its own line separate from all the entities. It becomes the the CIP line with the departments in there. Moving forward as we as we go into the next budget season, what would be the capabilities or to have CIP as a standalone line item?
We could do that.
And and I could kind of show you some things. It just makes it easier whenever you're looking at operational and performance, when these are all in there, but when we're looking at the big projects to where it's a standalone line, to where we're seeing those in there. It makes it a lot easier to flow.
Okay, yeah, we could we could do that. It might just be a single line item.
Correct.
And you would just see, say, if those two projects were, you know, working at the same, we're working on them at the same time, you might see 500,000 in there, and then you'd have to look at the project to see which one related to which.
Correct, and that's what I'm familiar with.
We could do that. That's not a problem. And then there are other projects as we go through, and this also accounts for revenue, like if we have a grant or if we are reimbursing one of the projects, say, like the Pratt Memorial Library, which I don't think we listed here. But if we, as we're going through the construction of the Pratt Memorial Library, we are reimbursing the general fund from the from the ARPA funds, because that money that we got from the federal government for ARPA has been earmarked for the Pratt Memorial Library. So periodically, usually at the end of the month, or unless there's a big expenditure, when we write the checks for each week, we just write, we ask the treasurer to to transfer, you know, 500,000, if that's how much we spent, from the ARPA funds into the general fund to reimburse the general fund, because it should be coming from the actual ARPA funds. And that's similar to grants, too.
And all the grants have their different specifications on how money transactions work, some you can write straight out of the general fund and reimburse, some you may have to write straight from the grant funding that's kind of segregated, is that right?
Most of them, if we pay any bills, it comes from the general fund, and then we reimburse. Sometimes we get money in advance. So that might be what you're thinking of, like, we have what's called a BAG, so B-A-A-G grant, Body Armor, I don't know what the R stands for, anyway, that we're working on now. They they provided, it's a state grant, state, federal, they gave us $56,000. So far, we've spent $30,000 of it. So those are the kind of things that we're keeping track of as we move forward.
Mr. Fulcham, just to give you an example of the revenue, did it fall into a project fund? I think there's an insurance maybe here.
Yes. That's that was, yes, that was for the Tillman Fire Station.
I'll look through this now.
So, Kim.
Sir.
The way you've laid out this budget performance, was it done like that previously, or is this a new thing? Has it always been laid out like this?
This is, it's a package. It's the way the, you're talking about this particular report?
Well, mainly, like, the $360,000 or whatever, under project, and we can see how that project's tracking, maybe not every line in it, but has has that always been done like that?
Yes, it has. As far as I know, I know we've, I've been doing it since I got here. I'm pretty sure that Ronnie Malfris did it the same way. I just don't think it's ever been part of any sort of, any sort of, you know, given the council necessarily, that information. I don't think it's gone to to.
And what I'm drawing down on is, you know, when you, when people say having line item, that looks like it kind of moves in that direction. Am I correct about that? Okay, thank you.
No, you're welcome. So this is the grants, and and I just mentioned the bag, Body Armor, it still doesn't have what the other A is, but anyway, maybe it's assistance grant. So this, these are all the current grants that we have, and. So there's, we have the Airport Fuel Farm, which is primarily completed at this point. The Airport Ramp, we had that one, that one's, and the way it, the grant amounts look a little odd, because all of those three, the those, all of those airport grants were really all in one. It was two and a half million from the Department of Commerce, and then we had a two and a half million dollar match. So there was really, that was my attempt at trying to split it up to get the two and a half million. It really ended up a little more here, a little less there, but overall, we're we're under the, we have about 446 or 466,000 remaining in that grant fund, so that's part of, when we talked about the capital plans earlier this year, part of that's going to be to buy out, to buy the the current terminal building. That money, some of that remaining money will be used to do that.
Ms. Burgess, what did we do with the BMX track? I can't remember.
So it got converted. So it we, it came in as a BMX track land, but it's been converted, as you can, if you see there, the actual descriptions changed to boat landing repairs.
Okay.
So we got, we've already received the money, and we just need to spend it.
Okay.
And we're working on diligently spending that, we just have to determine, and we also talked about that in the capital plan, where, on which boat landings we would spend that.
That's right, thank you, I appreciate it, I can't remember.
No, I've got one quick question, run a rabbit again. This is one of Councilman Ciccarelli's favorite things, is grant funding. But with that being said, who monitors the disbursements of, like, the grants to make sure we're, is that tracked through finance, is that tracked through others?
We track it.
Okay.
And we track it, and then at the end of a grant, we just went through the church road drainage. The Commerce Department comes in, they have what they call a monitoring. Ms. Williams participates in that, because we have to do certain fair housing announcements and things like that. So and so she makes sure that we follow the rules with regard to those, we make sure we follow the rules with disbursements. For that particular grant, it was two grants, so, and we had to disburse the money within 10 days of receipt of those grants. And it's a little, sometimes it can be a little diff, I've never had two, well, one other time, Marshco, but when you have those two grants and they're sending the money at different times, you still have to get within that 10-day. So we're, we work on, we make sure we meet those requirements.
Like I said, I've worked with LowCOG in the past, but some of the grant players.
And they help us, they do help us tremendously.
We perform to the grantor. The grantor has requirements of how to spend the money, when to spend the money, reporting requirements and all that, and so there are two things. Finance tracks it, so we can show all that stuff, but, you know, canceled checks have to be submitted before reimbursements are made, and all the grantors assure that we're compliant with those grants.
Correct.
All right, that just answered my question, thank you.
So then, this is just a list. We have various different grants from different sources. We have FEMA, which we had that brick grant that we had and we didn't have, now we have it back again. We have the State of South Carolina, we have Department of Transportation, like C-Fund, we've got the Transportation Committee and request funds for various, for rocking the roads, we buy rock, that's a grant, that's funded under a grant. This, the Honey Hill Tree Lines, Cutting Trees, has been funded by a C-Fund grant. Their Department of Public Safety provides grants, the Jasper County South Carolina 250 Committee, that is the South Carolina PRT, that's also state and local ATAX and hospitality tax, so those are grants essentially. Every year we get, we have the SRO grants, that's through the, that's the sheriff, School Resource Officer. We have the mosquito control. We currently have this opioid recovery, which we get, we're getting a little bit every year, well, not a little bit, but 177,000, we're still waiting for some this year. Just different, again, I've listed Pratt Memorial here because we're using ARPA funds, which is essentially a grant for that, and we get solid waste grants for disposal of tires and used oil and just different things. So right now, we have a total of over $10 million with the grants.
Now, run that rabbit real quick again. Do we have, and I know Mr. Ciccarelli, do we have people that actively are searching out for grant funding? I know we have consultants that we work with and different things.
Yes, LowCOG helps us.
Okay.
Fire Rescue is very good at looking for grants. We, one we have on here, right, that we don't have listed here, is we just received, they call it an ASAP grant, again, I don't know what it stands for, or I can't remember, it's about $21,000 to buy a specific piece of equipment. So we couldn't really do anything while the government was closed, but now that the government has reopened, we're going to move forward with that one. So Fire Rescue is very good, the Sheriff's Department, they're looking, they look for grants, particularly, their big, their big one is the SRO grant.
So if they find them, who writes them for us whenever we?
Usually it's an application, fill-in, most of the time it's a fill-in-the-blank.
Okay.
And so in my experience, either, either.
Or aviation.
Yes, and then the sheriff, they have people who write within their department.
So would you write grant, other departments would write their own grants, then you wouldn't get, you wouldn't overlap with that.
I know absolutely nothing about stormwater.
I know nothing.
Or the grant for the stormwater.
And we did, we did have help from LowCOG, too, I think, a little bit on that one, or did you do that on your own? Okay. Okay.
So the Cusahatchie, back to that again, but the community center, it's a CDBG grant?
Not yet.
Not yet.
We're in the process of applying for it.
Okay, all right.
So it's, the hope is, it's going to be like Marshco was, a CDBG and a RDA grant, hopefully.
So this one has a.
And the Cusahatchie Fire Fire Station is the same way.
Okay, you're with the grants. So the, is USDA RD also, that's a loan, though, it's not a grant, though, I see the word.
It's a very low-interest, very long-term loan.
Okay, so the grant could make up for the loan. I mean, it's great that it's a low interest, but I just wanted.
Mr. Fulcham, sometimes you can get a small grant also from our state, and some, well, the money may add, a great example of that is, I think, we had received a RDA grant for, you know, Sheriff's Department, or, you know, Chief, 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 they had, they don't, they're small.
Okay, and then the, I just, would be helpful for like a tracking, tracking purposes? I mean, I'd like to see the tracking on some of these grants, to see where they are, because here they just say active, active, and it just doesn't really give me any sense of when they were applied for, and when, or when we can expect these grants to actually be used, or whatever we need them for.
So we have a similar, similar to the project transaction report. It's also called the project transaction report, but it's grants, it's all grants. So we are, we do that for the grants, so you could see that, too.
Yeah, so how would I see that? Is this something I could?
I'd have to give it to you, I guess.
Wouldn't mind seeing it, like, be so often, you know, like, maybe.
Okay.
Or whatever, just to kind of keep track of what.
We'd have to, we'd probably have to just do this, or maybe keep it updated, and then if you wanted to see the detail, we can provide that.
And those are some things you can do direct, call them and or email them, they'll provide it to you.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, I think I'm done. Am I done?
Well, to take, I think, talk a little bit about the current rate, we've got a unique opportunity, the chief has already said, and with an opportunity that, how do we learn up these things? I often came directly to that, especially if that needs to be, and I try to repeat whether it costs or not. That one did, and I'm focused on, we use, and we use, we got a little chief app, chief before we got in, so he wrote the grant, that, as the first step, he sees the grant, and he said, not a grant back, that's great, that is, and it's, and it matches, and, and for, like, that work, and that match will.
Right.
Okay. Just probably, three hundred thousand dollars.
I think so, yeah, I can't.
Twenty-five percent cost share. Something we all need to be discussed, but it is a transit, or a decent, or, we can't, 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 we
All right, we will go back and resume our retreat. We're going to kind of deviate from the schedule a little bit and turn it over to Mr. Iwaniki.
Thank you. I'm going to give you kind of an update on Engineering Services Division and some things that we're doing and some things that we have done. So, a couple of things that are going on is we, this summer, got a new dump truck and we're waiting to get a second one delivered. And the difference between our old dump trucks and our new dump trucks is we're able to hold about four more cubic yards of material in the bed. And so that has made our operation a little bit more efficient. And we're looking forward to getting the second dump truck of that size coming in. The other thing that's going on is we're getting a fourth roll-off truck for our recycling and our moving our solid waste material. And so, we did not increase any positions. We are taking somebody that's traditionally done road maintenance work, a CDL driver, and moving them over to that operation. Right now, waste management usually hauls 10 to 15 loads for us on Monday. And our hope by doing this is that we will eliminate the need for waste management to have to haul for us. And right now, they're charging about $330 a pole for every thing they do for us. So again, we're making that change internally. And just wanted to make you aware that those are some of the things that we're doing and we, again, hopefully, we don't see a big difference in what you're seeing on the roadside where that employment employee used to work. But I think that's going to help save some money on the recycle side.
So Jim, with the recycling centers, have y'all seen an uptick with solid waste and just garbage coming in? Because I live out in the country, so I don't have the conveniences of trash services. So I do go to the centers. It seems to be way more crowded than it used to be.
I don't have a background to say what it used to be. I know that just by having to get waste management to haul for us, it's been pressure. And I think that's the pressure is going to increase. And again, as we get more and more people in, we're going to have more and more people use those facilities. I think that's something as a council and as staff, we want to take a look at, are our sites, we have six sites, are they the right size? Do we need to add another site? Do we need to expand certain sites to accommodate those additional people that are coming in? And I don't have the answer for you on that. I just know that those things are, we're going to see more and more pressure in that area. And again, that's part of the reason why we ordered the fourth roll-off. And we're doing some internal changes with how my personnel is doing work. Some of the other things we have for open positions right now that we have not been able to fill, my office manager slash logistics manager, we have a temporary working in that position right now. I'm looking for a operator slash lead foreman for the roadside, looking for a building maintenance specialist on the building side. Those are the, and then we still haven't been able to fill the project manager's position. Those are the four positions that are currently open. And again, looking to fill those as best we can with some qualified people in those Building maintenance side is a little bit, we're shuffling things around. We have two of the three building maintenance workers are out right now. So again, we're pedaling the bike hard with the employees we have. That's on the staffing side. We just went through the projects as part of the capital improvement. I don't want to really say budget, but capital improvement workshop. We do have several building maintenance projects going on. You will see the DSS roof bid will be on your next agenda. That came in at about, I want to say 46,000. So again, there's some savings there. You will see that we had five bidders for that job. So again, we had some good competition there. I think one of the things that came up was with the voters' registration and the flooring. And then with voters' registration and not making that move to the Weathersby location, there were some requests to take a look at possibilities to help them out. I'm telling you, I'm scratching my head pretty hard trying to figure out what additional can be done there. We know we have some roof issues on that building. We got shingles missing. And we will make sure that we try to secure that so that we don't end up with bigger issues, even though they're not planning to be there for seven, eight years, but a couple of years. And we will bring that back to council to say, hey, this is what it's going to take to make sure it's all secured and give you a view of what's going on there.
I know that that's one of our older building stocks that we got that was a part of the old hospital campus from back in the day where they're at. See the survivability of that particular building for the future just because of the state that it's in. So we'll put a temporary Band-Aid to kind of get them moving forward. We can get them a permanent solution is kind of the...
My concern is how big of the Band-Aid might need to be.
Okay.
And again, right now, yeah, let's put a Band-Aid on it, but how big of a Band-Aid do we really want to put on?
Right. And we don't want to throw good money at bad money just to...
And I think that's what I'm trying to say is we'll bring that to council to try to make sure that we're on the same page before we do anything out there. And make sure we all agree on where we're going to spend the money and how we're going to spend the money wisely.
Have you had anybody evaluate that building yet? I know we were kind of talking about it.
Well, the thing with that building is it was originally a flat roof. And then they put an A-frame roof on top of it. So when you are messing with it, it's a little bit more, I've got some structural concerns that I have about it. And then the temporary walkway canopy that's out there, I think that's getting to the point where it probably needs to come down and probably not replace it. I think trying to fix it is a bigger issue than taking it down. But then we do need a covered space, at least going into the voters', and that might take, that might be a carport I talked about with my guys. Maybe we could put a carport out in front there to try to address at least keeping people out of the rain as they were using, going in the entrance. Also with that building, the door in the bathroom being ADA compliant is a concern. So again, that's, you know, it's a temporary solution, but again, how big do we want to get into that Band-Aid is my concern.
Right. I think before we get into any big expenditures, come back to us and give us some good information.
Yeah. And that was my intent at least talking about it today is that we, that you're aware that it's not as easy as what we talked about in the workshop. Yes. So again, that's the intent to talk about it now is make sure that, you know, it's not just a quick solution like we talked about. And I will bring those numbers back to you guys so that you have an opportunity to weigh in on that. We're opening engineering proposals at 3:00 today to deal with all the paving in the county. And when we get that engineering firm on board, it will probably be one of your January meetings when you'll see that coming from us, that then we can start working on the pavement side of things. You know, we had 694... We had 694 in the budget. The council approved, I think, another 123,000 to carry over to get that paving work done. So again, you'll be seeing those bids coming in. The first thing is the engineering side of it. And then you will see, hopefully, a bid come in from a contractor, hopefully, late spring, and see if we can knock out all that paving work that we need to do, whether it's roads or parking lots out there.
So Jim, are y'all gonna try to do things kinda concurrent, building to building, to keep the, or is it based upon the contractor's availability?
I think it's gonna be on the paving contractor's availability. And there's some things like, again, the loop around Polaris and the old hospital there. We wanna do that when school's out. So again, there might be some work that's done in May and June, but then there might be some work that gets pushed off. But we want one contractor to bid all the tonnage on the asphalt, all that ones. That's the only option. Again, we have some additional paving work for the driveway into the Thomas Hayward. And then some handicap parallel parking out here on Third Avenue that needs to happen. And then, again, we got some CTC grant-funded projects that are also, some of those are also bituminous that will be dealt with with the same contract. Capital improvements plan, this is my understanding of what we agreed to at the workshop. And we'll continue to get these in front of council, make sure that we're on the same page as we scope these projects out. You know, one of the things that council talked about was this building right here. In looking at the planning of this building, if we have this place right here, council chamber is being worked on and being renovated, we probably need to have another room for you guys. And that's okay. So what are we gonna do? We have some money set aside for the Mary Gordon Ellis Chamber. And so maybe it's fix that up first. I think there was 80 grand that was in this budget to address that. So we will try to scope that out first and get that done and ready so that as we're doing the work in here, that there's a place to have council meetings that may not be as good as this place, but at least a viable option. So again, we're taking a look at, you know, all these projects that we have on the capital improvement and trying to make sure that we scope them appropriately. And again, get them back to council so you understand what that scope is before we start going off for bids.
So have you all been getting good competitive bids with these projects or...
I would say, the only one that we've really opened lately was the DSS roof project. And we had 11 bidders at the pre-bid meeting. And we ended up with five bids. So again, I think there was a reasonable amount of bidders there. That's really what I had to let you know. Happy to answer the questions. I guess something that Kim and I have talked about and what we'd like to maybe gauge council's thoughts is what would be if we did some as-needed services contracts for maybe carpentry, plumbing, flooring, those types of things that might help move these projects along? Is that something that council would be interested in us bringing forward to you to help make these things move faster?
What, yeah, what do you mean by as-needed?
So, all right, we have some carpentry work to do on the Mary Gordon Ellis building. There was some sheeting that is rotted away. I don't have the necessarily forces right now to do that work.
You're talking about for general repair and maintenance essentially?
General repair and maintenance, or as we're rehabbing it, okay? We're gonna put new carpet in here, all right? Rather than going out and doing a bid for this civic location, can we go out for bids to say, hey, what would be the labor cost of having your people come in to floor it? You know, the interior's cost is going to be the interior's cost. Can we do some as-needed services and find out who, you know, hey, we got five companies. This company's got the lowest labor cost. Hey, call them up, are they available? Can they do the work? If not, hey, can we run second? That would tremendously... That would tremendously help our ability to get things done. I know it's a little bit more open on our side because again, you're not approving every single bid. You're kinda approving the contractor. But again, to get things done efficiently on our side, when we put something out, it takes three to four weeks to open it up, right? It takes a couple, three weeks to get to you. And then it takes a couple, three weeks before we get them in the queue to do stuff for us. So again, what Kim and I talked about, or especially I've talked about, can we get some as-needed services for some trade labor so that when we do have those projects, we can bring them in? They meet our qualifications for our procurement and we can get them moving soon.
Well, you answered everything that, for the most part, me on that. If they have the license, they meet procurement, it's competitively done for the local vendors, and you could pick up the phone and call someone. I personally don't have a problem with that. Maybe Chris could speak a little more since he is a contractor.
Do we wanna put a number on that?
That's what I would do. I would have a number not to...
Exceed.
Yeah.
And if it exceeds, yeah, if exceeds that number, then it would come to the council.
Or if you have a certain, or just a dollar amount.
Well, the problem for me is, looking at it, is you're gonna have different trades. So carpeting or flooring, that's easy. You call this one, or that one, just three of them, you got it. Sheet rod, you're gonna call your normal paint guy. You know, so you gotta report with these guys, right? And then you'll know, but when we say a dollar amount, I don't wanna say by the hour because that could get very, you're gonna have to come back and tell us that. Is there a certain amount in that budget that you can use and just draw from? Like, I think, like, you know, what is, what is your...
There's a certain amount of numbers you don't have to...
What's your threshold?
Is it a dollar amount?
So if...
Oh, it'd be good for you.
So, a lot of times, we run into, we're getting prices when we ask between four and $10,000 are usually the, and so again, it's under five, it's okay, free phone calls, record it, you know, hey, that's what, here, everybody, but if it's over five... Then we've gotta go through the formal process of...
Written quotas.
Between five and 10 is a written, a written quote when you have to have proof.
Right.
If it's over 10, you have a formal bid process.
10,000 is not what 10,000 used to be.
Right. And that's one of the things we need to address in the ordinance.
We're gonna see how you're tracking, you know, because we'll have opportunity after it's done to see. Chris can look at it, you know, and say, hey, you know, and to do what you want, which is to speed this process up, you need a number. And I would think 25,000 is a good number. I don't know what everybody else thinks.
Could you give like a hypothetical example of something?
Hypothetical example, we had Mary Gordon Ellis building, just had a termite inspection. There are some things that need to happen on the soffits and some sheeting that needs to be replaced, all right? I think that's going to end up being about a seven or $8,000 project. Right now, I've got, on my building side, I've got two guys out. And so I need some help to get things done. It would be much easier if I could just say, hey, carpentry contractor, I've got this work, give me a formal proposal on it. They hand me the proposal, yes, you're the, you're qualified, pre-qualified, the number is reasonable, yes, start. Rather than going to...
Yeah, that's something that's important too, when you're talking about termite stuff, you know? So, I'd be comfortable with 20 grand.
But does that determine the whole ordinance?
So I think the, it needs to reflect the ordinance. And if we're trying to deviate from the ordinance, we need to change the ordinance to reflect...
Right. Yeah, update it too.
And there's a distinction in the ordinance for to have a list, a document of what it says exactly, but you can't get a list of providers.
Correct.
And then, like, you can't, you keep using the same one, you have to, and then, I have to...
It's gotta be fair and equitable to all those that are on the pre-qualified list.
But I think if you set a limit, it's not within the ordinance, I don't think we're following basically the law.
So, yes, and I think there's some ordinance stuff. And it's, I think, how you wanna set it up. Do you want to get rates from a contractor? And then, okay, they have the lowest rate, they are the first person we call, or the first company we call. And then, okay, if they're not available, we go to the second one. Or do we have, like Kim said, here's the list, and we just go, hey, project one, project two, project three down the list. And so I think it's how we set it up. I think there's many ways to do it.
So Andy, is this something that we can kinda task internally to kinda give like a model draft of that, like a red line draft, to where we could look at it and evaluate it to... First, we need to make sure we get everything legally adopted before we, that would be the first piece of the puzzle, and then go along with those. But how much money do we have earmarked for R and M annually for things of this nature? Just say random, if you were self-performing, having to do something.
Well, hey, I'll tell you about that. That was a great suggestion. We've been looking at how to approach the customer, see, make a couple of changes, you know, a couple of changes, and we know they're lacking a lot of the market. And we, there's, we need a dollar amount of optimization to do that. And to add a little bit of convenience to this, we've also had a debt to the different contracts, the residential services, and the lack of... Those are for in-tertiary party that is sort of like, based on qualifications, essentially is not what you do, but that is a proposal. And we do a whole ranking of which ones we have listed up to complete, have to work on, offer us, and to survey, remember, to...
And we try to show preference to in Jasper County businesses? Okay.
And you also have a local credit provision.
And they, correct, and that used to be a big, but others, only 20,000 dollars. It's a minimal amount.
So Jim, I like your thought. I think there's some legwork that needs to be done to get everything, the legal end of it, but...
To answer your question, building repair and maintenance has $105,000 annual budget there. But then there's some of these building repair and repair plan projects. Traffic court flooring, $10,000 was budgeted for that. Voters' registration, there was $15,000 for that. So those types of projects, not only building repair, but some of these capital, or small capital projects that we've talked about getting done, that would help get those done also.
So Jim, if we were, had to go into a whole nother ordinance, one thing that strikes me is you have a limit. Say if it was 20,000, 25, but then there's a master limit, you know, the budget. And then, once that gets used up, if you need more, you show us how we spend, and then we increase it by whatever. And I think that's how it'll flow, best for you. From a vendor standpoint, I know some government entities, and I don't know how Jasper does it exactly, but they require a certain amount of bids. And so certain vendors out there, they will always get requests. Doesn't matter what the answer is or what the budget looks like, you know, their quote, they're not gonna get the job because there's preferred vendors. So that rotation thing would keep other vendors in the game. If you said, this one can only get it this time, and it would keep them honest, you would be getting fair quotes in bids, and a good quote. If you agree using the same one and you're just saying, I need five quotes, you understand what I'm saying? Because as a vendor, I know exactly how to...
That's a, that's a, that's a problem right now, is when we try to get three or four quotes, people aren't responding because of several reasons. And one of the biggest one is taking action on, once we get that, those quotes.
Well, you're working with a traditional builder, right? And you're making that, you know, you have a builder that's in the total game, which works.
And I'm not even talking about it, it's just like, say, say there's a, what is the buses in Bubba, right? They have a requirement for five quotes. And everybody knows, you can do all the work, but you're not gonna get it. And so I don't wanna bid on that. And I'm not even saying that's a, it's just an example.
Right.
And so I could see that being a problem, but if they know that the same one can't get consecutively, and that the best out of the five will get it, they will, and you'll have honest quotes.
I'm sure there's like a rank and matrix that can, need to be created on a spreadsheet or there's probably somewhere that will do it.
Yes.
Okay.
Again, I think we're on the same page. And again, that was, again, I just wanted to test or ask that question if you guys are supportive of that before we go down that road.
I've got one more thing on a different subject, but the firehouse, I think in the budget, there was something like between three and 12 million or something like that for the, is that right?
That's what I'm gonna make it up.
What's that?
You're talking about two thousand?
Yes.
We're gonna have 20 million.
Yeah. Let me ask you a question, because it's rural, right? Why couldn't we do, you know, like, 80 by 60 metal building with living quarters in it for like a million two?
We can certainly do that.
I mean, I just was at Polaris, right? The school of Polaris, which is a metal building, it's three stories. And I got thinking about it while I was there, and I just thought, you know, why, why would we spend that much money on construction? I mean, it's nicely done. You could do the same thing in the firehouse, have a two-story on one side, living quarters, kitchen, the whole thing. And you could even do a brick facade on the front or something, and you'd save two or three million dollars, you know? As opposed to, or more, a block building that's rebar and steel. And I'm just curious why we wouldn't...
I think you are on the same page as I am. I think there are some other methods that we could use and some other techniques to, it might not be a building that will last 100 years, but it will be a building that lasts 30 to 50 years.
It'll last our lifetimes, that's for sure.
Right. And it will be, by the time that timeframe is done, it will be time for some new structure and some...
Yeah, it might need to grow, right? It might need to be bigger at that time.
And so I think there's some other procurement and other methods of getting projects done that we can do different around here and those things Chief and I have talked about a little bit.
Yeah, I know. I see the look on your face, man, but...
We've had long talks about this one.
You can do nice, you know, I'm looking at doing a new 70 by 70 barn, and you know, what we're talking about for the concrete and the structure, 185 grand. You know, and it's gonna be nice. It's gonna have a second floor.
And I'm tracking what you're all saying, and I'm a proponent of that, where you could build three buildings for the cost of one.
Right. Yeah, that's exactly where I was gonna say, can we get two, three buildings for the price of two? And I don't wanna say it's cheaper, let's just say it's less expensive.
Less expensive, and it...
More cost-effective.
It's, it's going to function the same. It's gonna function the same. And again, the lifespan of the building might be a little bit different, but that lifespan but that lifespan, by the time you take a look at it, is going to be, needs to be addressed twenty-five, thirty years from now anyhow, so...
Right, it's going to have to be renovated, and it's going to have to be made bigger possibly. I'm just looking out for, you know, I mean, if it was downtown or something, maybe we'd do something different. But still, you can do a nice facade on it, you know?
I turned to these guys the other day, and they were talking just about those kind of things. So I think they're on the same page, and trying to work on that. The dollar amounts we have in there were plugged in based on the original architect's experience.
Right, exactly.
And we needed to submit some things to put us in line for the loan.
No, I get it, I get it. I just wanted to bring it up, so I've just been thinking about it.
I'd like to see that, I think we all are on the same page, so that's...
All right, thank you, Jim.
Yeah, Chris, I was going to follow along with that discussion, because it was also recommended to do the Cusahatchie Community Center with like a steel building, because the amount that was looked for, that budgeted amount, was like three million to twelve million dollars. I said, I was just down in Florida, looking at homes that were like seven million dollars with swimming pools on the water. I said, for three million, for five million dollars, you could buy a luxury home, you know, like three thousand square feet, but this Cusahatchie, I don't know how to understand how it could be, how it was estimated to be so expensive. And just by plugging in, like, you know, do a Google search sometimes on steel buildings, and everybody kind of knows you're looking for a steel building, so you get a ton of advertisements that they, they're willing to send you, you know, Steel, General Steel, I think is one of them. That's included with it as well, so I said it down the same path as the firehouse, I can, it's also some possibility to go with a...
So I, I think the key is to get a performance spec from the architect. This, this is the things we need in the building, this is what we're willing to accept for finishes, this is what we're willing to accept for X, Y, Z. And get that performance spec from an architect, this is the rough floor plan. Yes, and then get it out there that says, okay, we're looking for a contractor, an architect and an engineer. What's the cost to build this performance spec? And you will get the best cost, you put all that liability, you put all that work on that design-build team.
Because they're doing it at risk.
And, yes, but again, we are not doing the specification, we are giving them a specification, but we're not telling them, hey, we want, we want this certain type of facade. If they can get a different facade at a better price, we'll get that better price when they tell us what that cost is to build the building. And so that's what Chief and I have talked about, and that's, I guess, my thought in moving forward, and how to make sure that we're not spending more money than we need to spend.
And then another thing that I would bring up is the general repair and maintenance. As these buildings age, regardless of what we build in the future, spec things that you can internally do with your people to be able to perform those, to where, again, another cost savings.
Here's a very simple one, right? Are we going to put air handlers and air conditioners in the attic, or are we going to have a mechanical room on the first floor? Right? Because when that fails, right in the attic, you're replacing what? Ceiling, carpet, floor, whatever it dripped upon, right? But if we have that mechanical room, yeah, we need some more square footage. But when something fails, it's isolated, and we can get to it without working in a hundred and fifty-degree heat, without having to worry about people hitting their heads on rafters and all that kind of stuff.
But no, thank you for thinking of that mindset, being frugal, being kind of forward-thinking to kind of look to where we can maximize our taxpayer dollars.
Projects and the costs, where everybody's paralyzed with, where do we go from here, how do we start? To, we figure out a financial plan, we're working with the debt, restructuring the millage for the road fire, all that's happening. So we know what we can afford, right? And now we're trying to make the best use of the money that we know we have, so we can spread it out amongst as many projects as possible.
So the expense... That would be built into the structure as well.
That same company would do that for you, I didn't know you'd have to go out and look for an architect or somebody.
The architect will look at the internal finishes.
Again, the architect will be there to help, this is the, this is the floor plan. This is, this is the size of the building, and then any special things that we want to make sure that are included. Hey, we want an IT closet, we want, and make sure all of those things are in. So again, when we put that out, anything that's not specified, the contractor can save money on their side to get the work done for us.
Sounds exciting.
Funding sources we use sometimes have some different requirements, too, and so we will work with that to make sure we can get them.
Agreed, and then some of the projects and community buildings, different other things along, they're ranking priorities, but the one thing is the funding mechanism, to make sure we can afford to build the buildings we're building. So we definitely have to look at the...
Well, that would be a lot nicer than Watson Tillman, I can tell you that.
So just jumping back a little bit to the small project you're talking about, do you have in-house people that can do things, too? Or is it kind of...
We have in-house people, and we do a lot with our in-house people. Right now, I'm struggling, because on the building side, I down one employee, and I've got two that are out on medical issues, so that means I have one person on the building side that's doing building stuff. And again, having, having the ability to, the procurement process where I can pick up the phone and get somebody to do that.
Gene's retired, I think he's volunteering himself.
So, so I think, to circle back to everything, I think if we get the ordinance updated to reflect what we're doing, you bring it back, I don't see any issues with that, Jim.
Thank you. Because I like this project, but there were so many moving parts the last time, I think it was part of the CIP, you know, putting this place, moving to this place, and whether it's being used in this and that. So I, you know, really, the way we went to the Hardyville council meeting, we had our council meeting in Hardyville, that I like the fact that they have a dais, just that you feel connected with the public here. I feel like kind of it's sunk down into a, you know, you're not really making connection with the public. I don't feel comfortable with it, but I think it's a waste of money, if you're going to do any renovations. I think this would probably cost sixty thousand dollars, maybe, to just do a whole new dais, I'm not sure.
Well, just get higher chairs.
Yeah, but I don't know, it just seemed like the way Hardyville had it set up, it was really a nice area, kind of.
Well, kind of to wrap it up, I just want to thank you for your professionalism and the way you go about things, I really appreciate it. So I just wanted to thank you for that.
What else you got for us, Jim?
That's what I had, I'm going to go see the dentist right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, I guess we're going to go back to the top of the list, Ms. Burgess with Administrative Services?
Yes, so Administrative Services Division includes the Finance Department, the Business License Department, the Register of Deeds, and the Assessor's Office. And I believe that's it, and then, that is also the procurement. So you have before you the completed projects for the Administrative Services Division, and some of these we've done, obviously you were very much a part of, with the budget and the budget amendments. You also, the council also approved a new credit card, purchasing card, that we have updated the credit card policy on and are about to roll that out. And we have actually escheded some of the, for the first time in a very long time, the, some of the tax cell overages. We defused some revenue bonds debt, and we also redeemed some other revenue bonds. And currently, we talked about the public budget software earlier this morning, so that's in process progress. We have the Logos modules that were, that the council approved not to exceed forty-five thousand. We have met with them and had a demo, and we are looking at the, some of the pricing. The pricing currently right now is a little bit higher than the, what was approved, but we will also see some savings on our current software, so that will net to much, much less than what was approved at not to exceed forty-five thousand, at least for this year. We also are looking at having ACH payments rather than writing checks. Currently, we prepare checks, which we have issued three thousand nine hundred and forty-one checks just this year, totaling forty-one million, seven hundred and eighty-three thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars.
So with ACH, have you all already started implementing that?
We have not started implementing it, I'm looking at various, we have a, currently, our current software has a module that we could utilize. I've also talked to a third-party provider just the other day. They have a little bit of a different process, so I'm evaluating which way we might go with that.
It's a lot easier once you get in the routine, but it takes, it takes some schmoozing to get everything working right.
Right, and possibly to get the vendors online, hardware, too.
Ms. Burgess, is that for the year or since July first?
I think this is, when we submitted these, it was from January one, as per the calendar year.
God, I was hoping so.
We'd be, we're already... So, and then, we're looking at a scanning program, other departments have done that. We're, we don't have enough file room to save a lot of our files, so we're looking at that, we don't have storage space. And then the millage reallocation, we're going to be working on that with the special tax districts and fire districts. And we just talked about today, we had the revised purchasing ordinance, which is going to be moved up, and it will, it will no longer be delayed, it will be moved up into an in-progress, hopefully, very soon, which I already have some ideas on that. And then in the future, we'd like to implement a central cash register, which will be dependent upon us getting these, the modules for the community services set up, and then updating the accounts payable process in general. And then, this is some of the items, we've participated in twenty-three council workshops, presented twenty-seven resolutions, five ordinances, and seventeen items for consideration to council currently, not including today's, we have sixteen invitations to bid and request for proposal. We hosted the State Accommodations Tax Committee meeting. We have processed eight thousand, seven hundred and seven invoices, which is, we average about a hundred to a hundred and fifty per week. And that's all departments of the county, for forty million, four hundred and seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four, we're talking about the checks. We have recorded nine hundred and eighty-three revenue receipts, totaling a hundred and forty-two million, four hundred and thirty-six thousand, three sixty-eight. Business license has processed one million, four hundred and twenty-nine business licenses, no, one million, one thousand, four hundred, it just feels like a million, one thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine business licenses, new and renewals, totaling two million, seventy-five thousand, six twenty-six.
Ms. Burgess, real quick, is that about average? Do we keep track of what we have as far as business licenses, what comes in yearly and...
That is, that will be the new average? Right.
Wow.
So we have a new person in that?
Yeah, that new person, she's doing an amazing job to...
She is doing a great job, absolutely doing a great job.
That means she's doing her job.
Right. So, and, so she is doing a great job, and we did hire a third-party provider to, they, they... Some of, some business license, some vendors that we might not think of, like, just the guy who comes in here, and because we're in original, right, we don't necessarily think that they would need a Jasper County, but maybe the copier people. Well, they're also doing business with Jasper County, so they're reaching out, new construction, they're reaching out. So they're also bringing in new, but primarily Ms. King has done the vast majority of it. Right. So the fee summary for the Register of Deeds, they're, they're busy in that particular office as well. They've recorded seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one documents. The total consideration on those deeds is seven hundred ninety-seven million, nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand. The total taxable consideration is actually a little bit more, it's seven hundred and ninety-nine million. They've received two million, seven hundred and fifty-two thousand in state fees, county fees are one million, one hundred and sixty-four thousand. There's other recording fees, and then savings from on-time filing, if we follow on-time with the state, we get discounts, so that's eighty-two thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven dollars. We don't have to pay it, so we don't, it's our savings, so we don't have to remit it to the state. So that's, you know, there's more, I mean, but that's, the assessor, all that they do, but have their particular information with us. So we'll start, Register of Deeds already submits, but I think we'll start, we'll start doing the other finance aspect of it, and Assessor, I think, submits their information monthly to Ms. Williams, so...
Do you have a question, as it pertains to the Assessor, and this is a reassessment year, correct?
Correct.
So when do we, when do those numbers finalize, to whenever we have to readjust the millage to, based on our findings?
It will be completed at the end of this year, twelve thirty-one of twenty twenty-five, and then that will go into the fiscal year twenty-seven budget. So we'll start that process about the March timeframe.
Okay, and do we have any pre-cursor or any numbers that we're looking at now? Because I would like for us to start off at revenue neutral, to kind of move forward with the reassessment to kind of before we adjust any millage up or down?
We don't have anything yet, I won't get those numbers until March.
Okay. But I think that'd be a good baseline, is to bring the millage back down to revenue neutral to...
I think we're required to do that, we are required to do that, so... All right, so Development Services?
Whoever said, who said? Who said?
Police. Development Services.
Are you all listening?
That's you.
I'm not, this is who the Development Services Director is.
You know.
You should. I'm gonna hold these, the Development Services Director, there's somebody who works on that, first in progress, in all, so, web three project, that was pretty much, Parks and Recreation, they didn't, they don't have the trust, they don't even, that took a different life, why, created a non-occupy, and just...
With the trust. In progress, the Pratt Memorial Library renovation that was started by Development Services, Mr. Iwanaki is really pulling all the weight there to get that finished. I think, by the way, we're looking at, trying to do a ribbon cutting for you for the IT office, perhaps in January, and then we're hopeful that the Pratt Memorial Library will be done, and we can do that in February for you, so we'll start seeing some progress of the work that you've been doing and sharing it with the public. The purchase of the Badgett property is ongoing, you know, the closing is scheduled to happen on or before December the fifteenth, so we're in the middle of that. All these future things are things that we may have touched on, but really fall under this division. I've been doing some of them, but new facilities for Beaufort Jasper Water Sewer Authority, as they expand, they have been coordinating with us, they've got some, some ideas from new facilities around the county, and they've been great, you know, jointly planning with us, we'll share some of that with you in the future. State grant for boat landings, that was mentioned before, we're gonna get to work on that. We have more money in grant than we have currently in one project, with that one project that we want to do, which is Beck's Ferry. We have property issues, we have to work through on that in order to get that done. A property gift to Beaufort Jasper Housing Trust, we have a piece of property along Argent Boulevard, and the previous council wanted to consider donating that to the Housing Trust. We'll bring that back to you, we'll tee that up, see if you're interested in doing that. We have obtained a civic site at the Center Point Development, which is along Route one seventy. Mr. Trask's Development out there, Planned Development District, I believe we have a little over five acres, is that right? Five point five acres, I think, of a civic site, and it's right on one seventy. And so we'll can talk to you about that, show you that, talk about what we think the plans ought to be for that particular property.
Here, Martinez, civic site is not, it could be used for multiple uses?
Yes, sir. We, typically, we think about it being a fire station or emergency services facility, but we have learned to just ask for a civic site, that way it gives you flexibility to decide what you want to, when to do to on it. So we have to get through that process as well. You've heard about the capacity credits that we're proud of, that we did over many years, the grants with Beaufort Jasper Water Sewer Authority, so we have, I think, roughly a little eight hundred thousand dollars there in capacity credits. Again, the talk was, from the previous council, was to at least consider donating those to affordable housing projects. You have the new grant program from Beaufort Jasper Water Sewer Authority you heard about recently at one of your workshops, and that will provide two hundred thousand dollars for the county for the next, each year for the next five years. And then you've also, immediately on the heels of the announcement of that program, you had the North Point folks ask you for some of that money, which we have been working with the city on. The city is gonna pay half of that deficit that they have to complete that line, it's critical infrastructure in the Sherwood Track area. And so we're gonna propose to you that you consider taking a major portion of that first year allocation towards that. No surprise, the subsequent years of two thousand, two hundred thousand dollars that you have, we do have an existing obligation on the Exit Eight Project, the Medical Center Drive with the city of Hardyville. The county pledged to, to contribute five hundred thousand dollars to that program. I think it might be smart if we allocate this new money to that, so that we don't have to dig in our current operating budget to try to find the half a million dollars to do that. We'll have more discussion on that. Beaufort Jasper MCIPs, I may have reported out to you before, we've been, over the last few years, been talking with Beaufort County, the multi-county industrial park relationships. If you're a partner county, you get one percent. We are a partner county to some projects in Hampton. We are a partner county to some projects in Beaufort. We are partner counties to some of our projects. Trying to do a reconciliation on those funds. Beaufort County does owe us money from past multi-county industrial park programs, and so we do have that information together, so we'll be going through that with you, bracing you that we're going to ask Beaufort County for that, that owed money. Town Park Development is a development backed by Sergeant Jasper Park, all the way down on what was the Butterfly Kingdom Road, if you remember where that was, at the end of Medical Center Drive, now called Medical Center Drive Extended there. That was the Butterfly Kingdom property, has changed hands and they're developing it, and they have some ideas about developing potentially some property next to the high school, which is county property, although it is property the county purchased from the state as part of the entire Sergeant Jasper Park deal. And it comes with some specific deed restrictions about how you can transfer money, and it's a little complicated. There are separate deed restrictions, depending on which side of the map you're on, and so you have to decipher all that with the developers. So there's kind of a big messy project. My goal in that was to try to, if there's a development proposal, is to try to get rid of that road, which the county owns, so that you no longer have the perpetual maintenance responsibilities on that road.
Is that coming the harder curve back?
Yes, sir. It's one mile, yes, sir. Potentially, it would be more valuable to the developers, so that they could control access on it, so that we are not involved in making determinations about access to a road, and the road is solely within the city. So we have to coordinate with the city and their development, because we have developers that are gonna be asking us for curb cuts on that road. We don't even know what the development is, or what Hardyville's permitted, and whether that's appropriate or not. So we prefer to just get out of that game and avoid that responsibility. And that, that's our goal, so more work to do on that. The Jasper County two fifty coordination, you know, that's taken off. We've had Honey Hill Battlefield, all those things, and, and they have been starting to be coordinated through Mr. Iwanaki and Mr. Bibbins, and so this new Development Services Division Director hopefully can start to bring those groups together as we morph into sort of doing more ecotourism type recreation, historical recreation. We all know that's coming, and that's a good thing. Philo compliance, where we currently have twenty-nine filos that we've negotiated in Jasper County. I had a meeting yesterday, and we realized that there were, there were only two in Hardyville. I think within the last five years, we've added fourteen in Hardyville. So it's, it's a lot, a lot of paperwork, a lot of accounting, a lot of help from the outside auditors to create the philo bills, to help the auditor and treasurer make sure we're billing correctly for those projects. You're gonna see much more of that. We have an economic development agreement with the city about how we do those filos together, and that was a five-year agreement. It's due to expire in December of twenty-twenty-six. And the meeting we had yesterday was with the SCA, the mayor of Hardyville, city manager, talking about some tweaks that we need to make going forward. So we propose to have a joint meeting as part of a shared services discussion in the future to talk about economic development, just the procedure of how we do these things, and also give you a rundown of all of them that have been approved, and what the future revenues are likely to be over the next thirty years.
Those people, those, they have been, most recently, we've had several distribution centers, as you know, but they're, they run the gamut from the solar farm up in the northern part of the county, to the hospital in Hardyville, to smaller businesses here in Ridgefield, there are a variety of, and it would be great for you, I think, to see the list and see what we've done over the years, and what tax credits you have authorized, and the monetary value of those.
Yes, yes, sir, that's right.
The town, I guess, where houses are, you know, in the city.
I, I don't, I don't think countywide you are, you may...
Or...
Perhaps, you could argue that.
Supporting the, supporting the, supporting the poor.
Yeah. So we'll do all that and show you on the map, and I think it'll be a real good, healthy discussion, because as I said, we need to make some, some changes to that agreement anyway, but in doing that, we'll be able to explain all the process and the impact while we do that. The Green Belt Program, as you know, the Transportation Sales Tax Program is moving, you're considering starting the bonding of that. The roadwork is, is pretty much moving forward with the program manager. The Green Belt portion is not, and the Green Belt portion right now, we're working with the bond council to finish the ordinance that will really create your Green Belt Program, which is something we've never done before, so we were very careful in doing it. It will come to you as soon as we have it staffed out, and that will define your Green Belt Program, define the application, the process, and how it's all gonna work. And we have meticulously gone through that with the Transportation Sales Tax Advisory Committee Group, we've met six times. They have been through all the options, and they have made recommendations, so we're putting those recommendations in the ordinance, and then bringing them back to the full council for a workshop. So that's in the works and something to look forward to. Levy Sewer is something that we've talked about for several years now, about the community wanting to have sewer down there. They have public water, they don't have sewer. We did spend about a year looking at different opportunities. We were able to get it in as a, a project in the federal government, in the federal budget, under Senator Graham, but then it was removed before the budget was passed, so we made some lobbying efforts to get it in as a, as a regular appropriation. And then we, when that wasn't successful, we went back and used the services of Ms. Heather Rass, she worked with Low Country Council Governments, to put together the grant application. I think you all heard a presentation on that. That was also unsuccessful. So we'll continue to work with Beaufort Jasper Water Sewer Authority about ideas about how we may advance that, even if it's in small phases, to try to get public sewer in that area.
The cost is pretty extreme, isn't it?
The cost is extreme, I think it was, because it was...
Twenty-five thousand per house or something?
It was proposed to be a vacuum system, I think, which are very expensive, so some of this may be assisted by some additional infrastructure that Beaufort Jasper's considering throughout the county. So we'll just continue to chip away at it, give you updates, but it's a project that we're all trying to solve. The Exit Three Project, I've been working on that since two thousand and seven. We've been working with the STIB for many years on that. It is at a critical point. You may remember that bids went out for that project as an add alternate to the I ninety-five widening project. They were wildly over budget, and so they are being rebid currently. So we are gearing up to expect that there'll be a cost overruns, and what are our options to assist in funding that? The county has taken a role as being a funder of the project, and with the city being the lead in the project, but we are definitely partners in it, in our relationship with the state and all the various grants that we've received over the years.
City, I'm glad you're...
We are, first, as a county, you are agreeing to be part of the TIF and to designate a certain portion of your TIF revenues, but you are also above that earmarked to thirteen and a half million dollars of the two thousand and sixteen Transportation Sales Tax to help to grade the cost.
What, what was the percentage that it was over? It's quite a bit, wasn't it?
It was, it was something like, I wanna say sixty million dollars of...
Yeah.
So more to come on that, but we, we...
We need that, too.
We need to have some conversation, and we will, and it'll start at your December first meeting. We're gonna have some discussion about parameters, because once the bids come back in, everyone's gonna have to move very quickly. We've got several different entities that are working, and so you need to know what parameters are safe to move within, and so we're gonna have that discussion starting in your executive session December the first.
Right.
Jasper County Chamber of Commerce and the Farmers Market, the issues there are that you currently lease a property to the chamber over here at the house on the corner, right? And the Perry House, as it's known, that's in part of our inventory. That house needs a little bit of work, too. We've got to relook at that lease arrangement, and we've also got to talk about the Farmers Market arrangement. You have a management agreement with the chamber, where the chamber really takes care of all that for you, does the scheduling, does the cleanup, does that. There was some discussion with the previous council about, did that make sense, or did we want to investigate the county doing some of that? Because we do not receive revenues off the rentals of that. We allow that to go to the chamber, because they were doing the work. You do own the property, the Farmers Market, but you do not receive income from those venues. So that's just a down and dirty list of things that are sort of on my desk, that I'm poking at, but not completing all of these things until we get the Development Services Division's director in here. And as I said, they'll be reporting first day of work on Monday the twenty-fourth.
So exactly what all is encompassed in Development Services?
Development Services is kind of what you would imagine the name is. It's everything that deals with, it is a division director that supervises planning and building, supervises, we talked a little bit about stormwater management today, it's an area we're really not into, this position will be part of that. So some of the land planning, future land use items, be working with that. I think eventually that position will be, the code enforcement will be morphing into the Development Services Division. The Development Services Director also is a division director over Parks and Recreation, the airport, what am I missing? And Economic Development Interface, which, quite frankly, I've been doing all of that, and we've got to start to get that into that division. Leonard currently serves as the Development Coordinator, okay, which is a direct report to the Development Director. He's serving as the interim airport manager currently as well. But that position has to have more interface with the Southern Carolina lines, has to have more knowledge about the filos and these types of things, so that that division becomes the primary link between the economic development and the keeping up with the grants from commerce and all that kind of thing. It can't, it can't continue to be at the top, we've gotta push that down a little. Does that help?
I have a question about the library, the survey, on, if, 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 you know, so that's a thing, but libraries for me, I think, it's made it so it's, so every town wants one, and every town, you know, loves its library, but I'm saying millions are being spent on this library, and I'm not really sure if this, if libraries should be reinvented for something more for the, you know, modern era, but I'm not sure what the library found out with their survey. They were reaching out to a lot of people, but I never heard back from them on what their, their results were on that, but I guess it's, I don't know what they, what they are.
So...
I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with the survey. Again, that was something that Development Services started, reason they started, probably, because it's a private property, it's a regional library, so Development Services, being in that sector, often, often, you know, the, 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 the,
Andy, when did you say the library will be done? February-ish? Sir, can we get a sneak peek before then?
Mr. Folsom, how are we doing on just filling positions that need to be filled in the county?
We're doing a lot better than we were. We've got a, we've got a list, this is, this is, there's a number of, we have, and now we give you an overview of the position five, four, nine, those positions now. And then we also have, I think this, this whole building here, she came out, so she also has information about three, she has, very good information about, about, four hundred and four ones. And the four, nine, those positions are-
Is that, so those are all?
And these all.
Okay.
Right, and you'll see the other positions. So it's, it's a whole lot better than it was. We still suffer as you, probably, and, and, and-
Yeah, I'm looking at that thirty-five. Holy cow.
Yeah, there's got to be some better means and methods, because it's struggling there.
We are all kinds of things that, 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 that.
Okay.
So we all, you know, we're, 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 it is, just to check out if it's really not that anymore, it's not about the, we have jobs, we, 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 it's not, you know, it's not, you know, it's not, you know, now.
So you've got, I guess the next big one is emergency services. Chief Wells, is that all encompassing of dispatch, fire, and everything with that?
That's all.
What are you, which one is the most dispatch or fire?
This, uh, it was eight, eight operations and dispatch, they were in the, in the station dispatch, I think it was fifteen across the board.
Okay.
Any, any power service information.
And your full staff, Kim, is, but is?
I am.
Okay. Oh, you've got your procurement person?
Well, procurement slash accountants, I may, for people, I might have one. Maybe for next week, maybe for next week, but, but yes, I'm, we'll, 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 we'll-
Now, what exactly, you have AP, um-
Finance, does, does, does procurement, does revenue, recording the revenue, which is a new thing that we started. We are looking at, we are collecting all of the bank statements from all of, every department that has bank statements. We're trying to record the, at least the interest that's earned on those, some of these, and any transactions that relate to the general fund, bank statements or transactions, some of the departments that have bank statements. We don't really have a provision to record their transactions, so we're trying to figure out, I think they need to maybe hire someone, or however we're going to handle that, but we don't have a provision for that yet. So we write checks, we do the whole, something, and we answer. Everybody calls us for everything, so. So somehow we got all the policies, even for our, so. One of the departments didn't have any water, and we got a call. I guess they thought we didn't pay the bill, so. So we also, the whole project, keeping up with the projects, the grants, those kind of things.
Mr. Chairman, we got, the parks that are all under Development Services, we have a port here for the park, right, we have those, here, and, 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 and.
Absolutely. Who wants to go first?
It looks like I'm up. Hi, I'm Lenny Sansone. I don't know, I've met everybody personally, but I am the interim airport manager, as mentioned earlier. We have a few exciting projects that we have completed. One of the things we recently completed was our, actually recently, but it's been about a year since this got completed, was our aviation fuel farm. And we even started two twelve, two twelve thousand gallon fuel tanks. One carries JDA, one carries ABGAS, and that's been operating for probably close to a year now, which is great, because now we're starting to get some kind of, some kind of traffic. Our fuel sales have increased on the field from about two hundred, about two hundred and fifty percent from prior to us having those fuel tanks. I think that a large of that, a lot of that growth has happened because we do have self-serve as a fuel option. We also, in January this year, we took delivery on two brand-new fuel trucks. Those are also a real asset to us at the field. We're able to be able to fuel, uh, uh, full service, make few full-service fuel, uh, flips, meaning put fuel in planes. The jet traffic has dramatically increased. I don't have an exact number on that yet, because I'm just, I'm going to go through one of our completed projects, explain what we're doing to get those exact numbers, but we're looking at, we're doing some tremendous things here. Our fuel sales have gone up quite a bit, and I'm really, really pleased with that. We're well over our projected revenue on that currently, and I only see an accelerated growth on that. We also completed a project of putting in our automated weather system, which allows the pilots to be able to, not only be able to get a weather broadcast over a twenty-five mile radius, but they are also able to dial a phone number. So if they wanted to know what the weather was in Ridgeland while they, before they took off in Florida, they can now make the phone call. They can find out exactly what the weather is on a very accurate level to be able to plan whether or not, or what they need to do if it's safer than to come here and whatnot. It's a really good asset for us to have as well. One of the things I'm looking forward to, and I want to talk with the State Aeronautics Commission about, is maintenance on this equipment. Maintenance on this equipment's not, not cheap in any sense of the word, and they have a program going on with, where they could, where they'll maintenance it for us, at no cost to us, which I'm looking forward to exploring the details of that, and we're working through that. We'll let you all know more about that when we understand what it would take to be involved in the state program on that. Currently, right now, after the warranty expires on this equipment, we're going to be on our own for maintaining it. So I'm really hoping to get involved in the state program, so we don't have to bear the cost of maintaining that equipment as it gets older. It's new and now, so we don't have anything to worry about in the short term. And then the airport purchasing, we actually ended up, this is the system that, one of the problems we had at the field when I started taking over is we didn't really know how much air traffic we had. We had estimates, we would go and count tails as they fly in or whatever, but what happens to the planes that fly in when we're not here, when we're not looking, when we're not watching? So I put, I found a system called ADS, it's called ADS monitoring. Basically, what it does is it picks up on the radar beacons of the planes, and then because of it, the radar beacon has all kinds of information about who's flying, whose plane that is, what their tail number is, what their registration is, what type of plane is it, and whatnot. And so I'm going to show you here, once we get it up, Andy's working on pulling it up here, but we put this ADS monitoring system in that's going to be able to give us a very accurate count of it. This went live on September 12th this year, and you having trouble, Andy?
I have all, 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 all.
He's got it on the computer there, but I can't get it on the screen here. But this shows charts and graphs exactly how, what our air traffic is like, and it also gives us all kinds of other data, and it actually will extrapolate some very conservative counts on our economic impact on the airport, on the, on the community. Just one sec, I'm going to, let's see if we can get this up for you guys to see, because this is really cool stuff. I was very excited about this because of the fact that we are able to now get some accurate counts on who's actually coming from our airport, and not only just who's coming to our airport, but where are they coming from. This was very exciting, because this, this will tell us, hey, this guy left from, you know, someplace in Indiana, or this guy came from, you know, Maine, or wherever they came from. We're now able to get that, and you can see here, there's lots of, hey, Danny, can you, I mean, Andy, can you go to the dashboard? Be under, just click on, I think, there you go. Go all the way to, now page one. Okay, actually, go up to operations there, and then click on the recent, no, the top one. Oh, that's just cool. Just hold on here, let me show this. This is a really cool thing, and I'll actually, any of you who want to see this on, I can get you, just, you know, put your email address in there, and you guys can actually access this data yourselves. I'm working on, with the vendor, on actually making this, some of this information public so that everyone can see it. That is live. That is the air traffic that is over our field right now. That's over us right now. That's what's flying in the sky right above us right now. It's actually live. Shows you all the aircraft that are coming, that are around us right now. All right, and if you go to operations, and just go to recent, it's the first one. Nope, all the way at the top, the very first one, when you open up operations. Oh my gosh, maybe it's kiosk then, I'm, there it is. This is showing a little light. I'm not sure if this is the right one. It's, oh, that's, that's, that's that flight, that's that plane right there. Go to kiosk. There should be dashboard. Let me, let me see if I can help here.
I have a lot of, the, 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 the.
Did I read that right? Where it said one plane had landed today?
No, that was, that was that one plane. This is what I wanted to- This is what I wanted to show you. So today's, today's not great weather. We have, we have low visibility at our airport, so we're not getting a lot of air traffic today. So our today numbers don't look so hot, because it's foggy and whatnot. So one of the things working, we're working on, and the FAA has approved, is what's called instrument approach, where the planes can use instruments to see. But one of the jets are coming in, we had, we had a couple jets scheduled to come in today, but they decided to go to a different airport, because they can't see here, we don't have instrument approach right now. So when the, when we have that instrument approach, it's supposed to be installed, the FAA is supposed to get that up and running and online in 2028. Once we have that, a lot of our weather issues that, that cause diversions will go away, and we'll start seeing more, more landings. But today we had the one landing today, we did have three takeoffs. But this is, this number, the number this year, this is since September 12th. This is what I'm really excited about. We've had, we've had twenty-three hundred and forty-seven planes land since September 12th of this year. And then we've had twenty-three hundred and thirty-six planes take off. And then you see the little map there with all the dots. That is where they, where they came from. And so you can see, we are getting people coming in from, what, Texas, looks like Wisconsin, all the way up into the Northeast, all over, and then a lot coming in from Florida and here in the South, which is really obvious, but it's really kind of exciting to see this kind of stuff.
Does that distinguish jet traffic from propeller traffic?
That, that particular data right there is all air traffic. But yes, we do have the ability to look at other, we can look at individual stuff, if I can get my mouse on the laptop here. Here we go. So with this data here, if you see down here, we have like twenty different sheets I can look at here. This one here is air, aircraft operations data, basically takeoff and landing, and I can, I can, you know, change the scope from day to day. This is, this is, I usually run it based off of, because it's such a short period of time since we've activated this system, it's not, doesn't make sense to, you know, narrow it down. But we can see all kinds of things. This here is air operations that we've had. This, this is our tail, these are our individual planes that we've had. So now I can see, this number right here is a tail number. It's this unique identifier to every plane. It's kind of like a license plate on a car. So this is what tells us who this plane is, and we can get all kinds of data on this one plane, because it just keeps going over here. And this tells me where it's registered, what kind of plane it is, where it came from, so we can find our, we can find our, our jets, we can find our helicopters, we can find all that stuff here. But it also gives us some, some different, other, other data here. This is more air operations data. It talks about, you know, how many of them are carriers. We don't have any carriers, area field carriers are considered like, we have, carriers would be, you know, Delta, Southwest, those kinds of aircraft. We don't have any carriers that come to our field. Air taxis would be basically people that hire a plane to just kind of give them, just like a taxi, you know, you need to go down to the store, you hire a taxi to pick you up, take you to the store. Well, this is the same kind of thing. They want to get over here, they just have, it's just a private arrangement between the air taxi company and one individual or a party that's traveling.
Yes.
This is military two-hundred-and-fifteen, that's, you have two-hundred-and-fifteen operations.
Yes, yes, yes. So oftentimes what ends up happening-
I've heard every one of them.
Oftentimes what ends up happening is the military will come through, and they will do military training operations at our field. This is a very exciting thing. In fact, actually, on Tuesday, Cory and I witnessed a Blackhawk coming in at night, right about six o'clock, six-thirty, coming in, doing some operations at our field. I didn't stick around to see what the operations were, but they do come in oftentimes, oftentimes we see Chinooks and other Coast Guard and different, different other types of helicopters coming in, and they, and they run, they do practice maneuvers around our, our field, and it's, it's pretty exciting to watch. I mean, if you're hanging out there long enough, you'll get little air shows every now and then, and it's, it's kind of fun to, to check that out.
How do glider, how do gliders weigh into these numbers?
Gliders do not have, have the radio trans, the radar transponders that we, this data, this technology uses, so the glider activity is not reported on this, because they don't have that radar equipment on the, and this uses radar equipment.
Do we keep track of any gliders, though, that use the-
We only have one, one glider group at the airport right now, and they typically fly on Saturdays or Sundays, depending. They haven't been very responsive as to letting us know when to advance when they're flying, so it's hard to keep track of what they're doing, being that they don't have radios on their, on their aircraft and whatnot. We, we just have to basically go outside and see, oh, the glider people are out, because that's about how much notice we get to, to recognize that the glider operation's going on, which actually is a safety concern, but that's another subject altogether that I'm not prepared to go into.
So I've got a couple questions.
Yes, sir.
I love all this stuff. It's really cool, not to be a Debbie Downer, but I think this costs seven-hundred-and-thirty thousand a year, the airport to the taxpayer. So I guess my question would be, how do we get this airport net zero or making money?
I think it's a fair question. It's definitely my goal. One of the ways we did that, one of the things that I'm doing right now is I'm working on increasing air traffic to come in and buy fuel. I spoke with an organization yesterday, it's a membership organization of jet owners called CAA. I'm going to be, you know, get, I'm getting more information on this right now, but basically people with CAA will only fly to CAA-approved airports, which we definitely can qualify to be. I have to deal with some paperwork on getting that done, but this, I was, I was talking, when I was talking with them yesterday about CAA, I, they were mentioning how they had another airport that was in Midwest, but they were wanting, they became members about three years ago, and they reported that over the, over three years, that that, that membership increased their air flights, just that membership alone, increased their air traffic by over five hundred new flights that would not have come in without the membership. The reason why jets are so important is because you've got to understand that these, these jets, they, they can uplift about, be anywhere between two-hundred-and-fifty to nine-hundred gallons of JDA in one take. And we'll be taking in anywhere between fifteen-hundred to eight or nine thousand dollars in fuel sales as a result of one of these planes coming to our field. Now, when you take that, those gallons, and you say that our profit on those gallons is between two-hundred, two dollars and fifty cents to two dollars and eighty cents per gallon for, and you're selling, you know, eight hundred gallons at a time, that's quite a bit of revenue. And so while we do, while we have had an operation expense, or we have been showing some losses, we also have to keep in mind that the infrastructure that we have in place now that is costing all this expense is new, and we have, we have basically startup costs. But as we start getting the word out to the fact that we have self-serve JDA, which we are the only, we are one of two airports in the area that offers self-serve JDA, which all the air, with all the helicopters, like Liflight and several other helicopters prefer to use the self-serve JDA- Jet A rather than having us bring a truck over and fuel them up. This, this, when these infrastructure resources start getting out there, and we have done very little bit in marketing up to this point. We're just now starting to get to a place where we can actually start our marketing. When this marketing gets out there and we start getting the word out to be out that we're a resource for people and we're, we're not just a little 2,600 foot runway with no resources anymore, but we actually are a full-service resource. I, I don't, I'd have no doubt in my mind that we'll be able to not, not just be operating at a self-sustaining, you know, break even point, but we'll actually be profitable, where the airport will be generating its own money. And as a result of that, when we come to a sponsor agreement where we need to come up with our sponsor share, we'll be able to pull that out of the airports, the airports' resources and not have to approach the county for extra support.
What about bringing in new business? New hangars, new?
New hangars, well, yeah, that was actually one of the talking points I had. We do have some projects in place right now where we're working on bringing in some new hangars. I, I, we have, we were, we're looking at and we're talking, I'm talking with Holt Engineering about helping getting the process started. And we got to do some rezoning because Ridgeland, Ridgeland, some of our field is in the Ridgeland zoning and we got to get some rezoning situations done on where, on where we want to build these hangars, but what we're looking at doing is.
Are we talking county?
Yes, yeah, so our, we own the land, but it's been annexed by Ridgeland, it was actually annexed before we bought the land. And so we have to have the town of Ridgeland rezone this residential property.
Are we as the county looking to build structures?
We, we are, we, we, the project I'm talking about right now, I have, we're going to be working on doing some site development that's going, and then I have an investor, a developer that's going to build the structure and sell the structure to tenants that we're, that we will have for an extended period of time.
So the taxpayer won't be, it'll be a developer.
There will be some small costs involved in that site development that I mentioned, because we're going to be doing a 75-25 split with the state on that.
Have you looked into Georgetown's airport? You know, that, that airport was a, it was dying and they turned it around, it's a huge profit center now for Georgetown, for the town of Georgetown.
I have not, I, Georgetown, South Carolina.
It might be worth looking into a model.
Yeah, that's up by Myrtle Beach, yeah, I, I'm a little bit familiar, but I'll look into it a little bit more.
Yeah, I heard it's really successful, they've done a great job.
I mean, that's, I think, Mr. Engus, and I think that's exactly where we're heading to being is a, is a big profit center for, for us as well. I'm pretty excited about the plans, I don't even think I have enough time to go, I mean, if you'd like to, I'd love to share with you a lot of the work projects that I have in place, but I think we've got a lot of opportunities.
I'll set a timer with you and come out to the airport and meet with you.
Yeah, I would love to have that opportunity to go over that in more detail. Because we don't really have time for me to go into all the different profit centers that I have.
Right.
There's a catering opportunity that I'm maximizing, we're looking at, there's a huge need in that field for, I had probably 50 people come through my airport last week, all, and probably, you know, at least 15 of them would have liked to have a snack machine available to them. We don't have a snack machine on the property, I'm looking into getting snack machines on there so we can be able to make, it's not going to be a huge amount of money. There, you know, it's a snack machine, we're not going to make a large profit on it, but it's another source of revenue and all that revenue counts towards profitability.
Doesn't matter what it is.
Yeah, so I'm just, if I nickel and dime it, so what I'm looking at doing is not, there's a notion out there that we just want to make all our money off of the hangars. Hangars is part of our business, it is a big part of the business of running an airport.
No, but it'd be nice to have some businesses, like mechanics.
But there's many other things.
Museum, there was a museum that wanted to come out.
Exactly, so there's a, there's a big project I'm working on, we're developing six 7,200 square foot hangars. This is something I'd like to go into more detail with you or any one of you if you'd like to talk about it in detail. But what I'm wanting to put inside, the people I want to put inside those hangars are businesses. Because businesses bring more air traffic and more air traffic sells more fuel. And so that's kind of my ultimate overarching strategy on approaching this whole airport profitability issue.
So Lenny, with this, I'm, and I've always been open, I'm not a big fan of the deficit that the airport brings to the taxpayer. But what is your timetable to make this profitable? I know you said you've got a multitude of different things that you were talking about, but how long would that take? Five years, 10 years, 15 years? It, it sounds great, but we, we have to look at it because between now and then, the taxpayers have to support the operations of that till it becomes there and, trust me, I get, of anything in this county, I get beat up about the airport more than anything.
Well, I'm hoping to take that stress off of all of you guys. Here's my, here's what I have done since July 1st when we went to the new budget cycle. We budgeted $220,000 in revenue. This is not talking about grant revenue or non-operating, this is operating revenue. $220,000 was what was budgeted or projected for the airport. We are now four months into this budget year and I am already at $110,000 of revenue currently. Last year, we ended our budget cycle, we were, the airport was approximately 281,000 deficit. My goal is, is between, with, and what I, and I'm definitely on track to do this, but my goal is to eliminate that $281,000 deficit by the end of this budget cycle. That's, that sounds like a very aggressive budget, but, you know, with the track record I have just in fuel sales alone, not even getting into the fact of me fixing some of our leasing issues, we're already tracking to do $330,000 in fuel sales alone. So I think with, when you start factoring in, clearing up the, the leasing issues, collecting back rents and, and, and then also making adjustments like we did by purchasing the building and eliminating some costs like a lease payment. That lease payment was, was $5,400 a month we would be paying. We made that bulk payment, we bought the building, we no longer have that operating cost once we make that, once that sale bill is final. So I think we're well on the track of getting at least very close to my goal of eliminating this deficit and being at least a break even point by July 1st of '26. If not, if I, if I can't get all the way there, but I'm pretty damn close.
That's very advantageous. The only thing that scares me, we've, we still have multitude of lease agreements that are kind of hanging in limbo now. We'll have to kind of see how everything shakes out in the near future. I don't know how that all is going to work, especially whenever the collection of what you're saying is, you said back pay or whatever.
Yeah, there's some outstanding rents that's, doesn't, has not been collected. I collected about $6,000 earlier this week from a tenant. And I plan on, and I'm just starting to get some momentum on that subject. That particular issue, the lease issue, has been a lot for me to wrap my head around and be able to put together a strategy, but I believe we're starting on, on building some momentum in that direction. And I think we're going to be able to get something that's not only going to solve the finance issue, but it's also going to be putting a lot of the tenants that are on the field at ease and being able to create some peace on the field as well.
So we'll be able to work something out with those that are kind of in limbo and.
Absolutely, absolutely, I already have a strategy in place and I'm prepared to do that.
I personally have not been in favor of some of the things that we've been looking at with them as far as some of the lease agreements and different things, I think we've got to find that happy median. I don't think we've found it yet, but, but I definitely don't want to see other stuff at the airport in the form of potential lawsuits looming and different other things.
Yeah.
Whatever we can do to kind of amicably make this work. However we get there, we got to get there.
There is actually, there is an ordinance that was passed by a previous council in 2023 that provided a lot of clarity on how we can move forward on this subject. And if you wanted to just have some time with me, Joey, and we can meet privately, I'll go over the details on that. Again, this is another one of those, it's going to be way too time consuming to discuss today issues.
Was that the last lease that was signed you're talking about, was that in the ordinance?
There is, there was.
It was in 2023, but it was signed in 2024.
There was, there was a lease, there were several leases included in that, in that ordinance, but, but there's not, I'm not referring specifically to the lease. I'm referring to some policy direction that was in that ordinance. And again, Joe, Mr. Engus, when we, when we meet, I'll go over that with you.
I will definitely come out and talk to you, but I do have to say this too, is I appreciate you taking on this enormous mountain of a hill. So it looks like you've, you know, you're planning and you're open to discussion and that's all I really care about because we have a lot of taxpayers to worry about that are, like Joey said, it's probably one of the biggest things I hear about. I just had a fight on social media about it last night, so it's a beautiful thing.
One last thing I want to put out there is, and I'm going to be approaching you later in detail with more detail on this because I do, would like it to be council adopted at some point, but I'm working with the Advisory Commission so that we can collaborate on a strategic business plan for the future of the airport and how, how are we going to collaboratively tackle this, I mean, everything that I have just. The Airport Commission, yes.
And Lenny, another thing, and like I said, if we can get where the airport is positive revenues, it's not costing, like, I'm all for it. But some of the other things that are, that are low hanging fruit kind of things is you see a lot of programs and different things that other smaller kind of airports in the region do with these type of fly-ins and educational components and different things.
Absolutely.
Some of the things that we're looking at to maximize and market the original airport.
Absolutely, so fly-ins and having some public events doing that. You know, one of the other ideas that I have, and this is a big project, and I, we have to get our problem solved before I can take this project on, but you know, Buford has their Water Fest every year, it's a big community project, everybody comes in and it's kind of like become Buford's thing, you know, where they do. What I really would like to see guys, is I would really like to see a week where we do an air fest and we just have like a, basically like a week-long air show come in and we just have food vendors and just make it basically almost like a county fair if you would. And we could really be able to get some community involvement on that. It's just an idea at this point, I'd have no legs behind it, I don't know why that just passed out. Oh, looks like, the pilots would love that. But I also think that the community would really be into it because it'll be a very fun thing. Is this plugged in, because I think our battery, oh, I broke it, so anyway.
With that being said, whatever we can do, we're not going to make everybody happy. But anything that we can do to bridge that gap, to get the airport back sustainable flourishing. And if you could take that burden off of the taxpayer and off of the elected body, that would be amazing.
I, I do believe that that is entirely possible. Another issue that I just learned about is that we could become a reliever airport for Savannah. Reliever airports are when they have too much air carrier traffic coming in. They, then, then they'll send all the GA traffic, which is the kind of airport we are, we're a general aviation airport, and they can send all to us. FAA is not seeing this as a, as a reliever airport right now. But I think with some talking with the FAA, we could probably make an argument to make, become known as a reliever airport, and that means that when Savannah needs to send that air traffic to somebody, we can have, be on their list to send that, that's more planes, more traffic and more fuel sales. So I think we're all on the same page, we want to make this airport, airport that is not sucking up a ton of money and is actually producing money for us. I heard a, I heard a story last week, I was in Virginia getting some training on how to be a, on being a certification training on being a general aviation airport manager. And I heard a story about an airport last week that has so much stinking money coming in, it's a small town like ours. But they're, they run their airport really well. It's in a rural tourist community like we are. And this guy, this airport has so much money that coming in that they ended up buying golf courses next to them so, so they can control the airspace, that's what they told the FAA. But they were, they had golf courses and, and other crazy things outside the airport just because they needed to put the money somewhere because they had so much money building up. So I think, I, I'm not saying that that's not going to be our problem in the near future, but I'm just saying that that kind of stuff is, is possible, there's a notion out there that no airport ever makes money. And I think that's, that's, that's not necessarily going to be an issue, we're going to deal with, we have an amazing property. And I think we're going to be able to maximize some profitability out of it.
And Lenny, I think for the sake of time, my last thing is, and I don't know, I guess you're kind of at the end of everything. What can we do to, to foster a better relationship with the hang owner and pilots out there?
I think it's a fair question and I'm working on doing that, I think just creating communication, I think this is really a lot on, you asked your question in regards to we. But I really think a lot of it happens with me, being the manager, being the representative of the county on the field. I think it really happens a lot with me just being able to engage with them more and be able to be more communicative. The previous manager was, created a lot of stress because he was not as communicative as, as could be. And that's a lesson I'm learning and, and I, and I do end up, and wanting to make that a, I think we're talking about doing fly-ins, we're talking about doing some of these community projects. I think we're talking about, you know, collaborating with, with, you know, members of the Airport Commission or even, even members, even the tenants within the airport on some of these things that we talked about here. I think that's all kind of going to be very key to the notion of improving community relations within the field.
Awesome, do y'all have any other questions? I think you're finished with everything?
Yeah, I don't think I have very many more projects. Yes, sir.
What's the deficit running out, I think we budget a million dollars for the airport?
Yeah, so when we're, when we're talking about that budget, we're talking about the big budget, we're talking about the big budget, we're talking about. Yeah, that's, that's got your operating and your non-operating revenues and costs in there. So we're talking about the, the actual operating budget, I don't really have it in front of me. But, but the deficit, the left, the deficit. I don't have that number in front of me. Yeah, and so, and then the other thing is, we're really trying, even though we set aside 750, even though we set aside all that money, doesn't this mean we need to spend all that money? So we're working on finding creative ways to maybe not spend as much as we, like, remember my goal. My goal is to get that, at the end of the year, we look at how much money we spent, how much money we made, and at minimum, at the end of this tax, at the end of this budget period, at minimum, to have that be a zero. After we looked at all our revenue and. That, that's my goal.
So we can hold you to that?
That's my goal.
Okay.
Okay, it's a goal, I'm not making a promise. But I. Right. Yeah. I, I 150% agree with you, Mr. Engus, and I do think we need to communicate better what the plan is. And one of the things I'm working on doing is putting that plan together in a presentable form. You and I can sit down and have a very long conversation and give away the details, but we can't share that to the public in a very long, complicated thing, we're going to lose people, so I got to put that together in a concise plan. I think, I think it's something that, yes, I could think we can probably have a, have some kind of public presentation available by the beginning of the year. I, when I say, when I say the beginning of the year, I'm referring January to February.
Presentation and then Q and A, because you're going to have a lot of folks, but come prepared for Q and A.
Well, there, there's that, and one of the, you mentioned, you asked, what are, what are some community things we can do about developing the community? Well, one of the things I'm going to be working on doing is I am going to be working on having some just air meetings for the airport tenants to come and be a part of and just have a, kind of a town hall meeting if you would, but it's for me to be talking to everybody else and saying, hey, here's what's going on, this is what you want to. And I think that's actually going to help with a lot of the phone calls you're getting and you're getting, you're getting. You know, because I want to be able, I want to not, not only solve the finance problem, but I want to take care of, I want peace on the field, and the reason why you don't have peace on, why we don't have peace on the field right now. I think we've made some progress. But I, but I don't think we're there yet, and one of the things I can do. of the things I can do, and one of the things I plan on doing is increasing the communication through the, the town hall meetings on the airport, through the regular emails from me to them. I want to put together a newsletter, so everybody's getting a newsletter. In fact, the newsletter will probably be even a broader audience, maybe if you come through the airport and you want to, you know, get on the Sky, Sky Blue News or whatever, you know, you can do that. And, well, so, communication's a very important thing, let's, we have so many moving parts right now, and I'm trying to get them all organized, and, and so, the communication honestly has been at the bottom of this, because I'm still trying to put my head together on a lot of this stuff, on how are we going to do it, so I don't even know what I'm going to say half the time. But we're, but we're starting to get that direction, Andy and I have been working together real hard on this, and we're starting to get that direction, and I think we're going to be able to start, I think, in the beginning of the year, we definitely can have some more frank discussions where people can ask a question and I can have an answer for them.
Absolutely. And one point of advice that I would give you is, don't overpromise and underdeliver, kind of be realistic with some of the things, because it's very advantageous to say people try to get it X, but when you don't get it at X, it's going to be the gospel.
Right. Right, and that's, that's why I stress that it's a goal, that these are goals, they're not necessarily, this is what we're targeting, they're not commitments, they're not promises, so I do want to stress that, this is what I'm shooting for. I think, and I have a lot of reasons why I believe that the goal is attainable, but I don't want to make, I don't want it to, I want everybody to understand that, you know, we can't predict what really happens, and so, while I do think that some of these things are very attainable, where we can be pretty, we might, if we, you know, if I have a two hundred and eighty thousand dollar deficit last year, and we end up having a thirty thousand dollar deficit this year, I didn't make my goal, but we came really darn close, and I think that that should be recognized as progress, and be able to, we can build on that.
We appreciate it.
Absolutely. And one thing that I would, I would stress that costs zebra dollars, is improving those relationships with hang owners and pilots.
One hundred percent, and, and that's going to be work in progress, but I'm definitely, is definitely a goal of mine as well.
I think the first step is to try to get through the legal issues on the leases to begin with, and then go from there, because this is, you know, nobody knows where this is going to land. And the other thing, is there any community impact at all, like, on the outside of the airport? I don't know what the housing numbers are. Do you ever get complaints from people?
I don't get noise complaints right now. No, I don't, I don't have any, any, any noise, I think, I think some airports end up dealing with that a lot. We, we don't have that problem at the moment, I'm grateful for that. I do think that we'll see what happens, is, you know, I mean, they put up, they're putting up two hundred houses across the street from us, who knows what that's going, and they're bringing, I don't know, if they, if Regent keeps building houses around the airport, we might end up with noise complaints, and then that's going to be something we're going to have to start thinking through as well.
And the average of our flights?
I'm still building an average right now, but, because that data is very new, I mean, we, I just showed twenty-three hundred flights in a matter of four months, or three months, you know, nine, September twelfth, we're just now in November, so it's like three months of data, we have twenty-three hundred flights, so we have a, a little bit of air traffic there, so I, I don't know what that average is out to, but...
So we have very little data, other than few reports initially on the airport.
And that's, that...
A lot of data, we share with you.
It's definitely a lot more than one point three. And that one point three number is what drove me into, because I knew that was wrong, but I knew that was wrong, but I couldn't prove it, and so that's what caused me to go out and research equipment to be able to come up with real data.
Also, one other item buried in there, something that, in that it's twenty-two impact, it adds a model that we talked about, you know, two points this week, they had a lot of, a lot of, so it gives you a different impact based on the form that they add in there, so you'll start to see, but impacted to communities, so that's a, another counterbalance to, maybe subsidize the ownership.
Thank you. And I would say for the sake of time, we've got a few more of these items to kind of muster through, but, but thank you, and email us your number, I don't have your number, that way we can...
Absolutely. I'll, I'll, I'll reach out to both of you.
I appreciate it.
All right, Andy?
We're going to take a quick break for a second while we transition to the next slides.
All right, Jonathan, I'm ready when you are. All right, Ms. Wagner.
Hello. Um, Planning and Building Services Department, you all know who I am, so I won't introduce myself. Our current project, we're working on the famous U-Haul Overlay Zoning District. Because of some change in the council that's been just kind of laying dormant, but as you know, we're ready to get back to work there. And we'll be working with y'all to make that something that we'll all be proud of, make some changes to it. What'd you say?
I said to remove it.
Not all of it, not all of it. We're gonna engage you so we can bring something back to make you happy. Jasper Telfair PDD, this is, we've been working on this project for quite some time. We required them to do a traffic study, and they needed to revise that. I did get the comments back this week and a request from the developer to put this on the December 1st council agenda, but I told him it's not ready yet because Stam Tech, or the county's consultant, needs to review the revisions. But that will probably be coming to you pretty soon, maybe January.
That's 315 at 17?
Corner of 315 and High Waiting 17, that's correct. Daily Organics PDD, that's something that passed through council. They have not submitted a development plan yet, but I believe they are working on something. I've heard from their engineer. There's the CSP Development, that's the one on Highway 278 near at the end of Brickyard Road. That's 270 single-family units built to rent. They've already done the land clearing, they're doing some of the infrastructure now. Then we have the Bailey Park, 162 townhouse units, that's on Old Bailey's Road. I know they're nearing the end of their site infrastructure. They are hoping to come in first of the year for final plat approval, whether that's, probably not gonna be for February. And then there's the Next Chapter Neighborhoods, which is 260 single-family units. They're getting very close to being ready to pull building permits there. That is on Highway 170, right past the John Paul Catholic School, and it sits back and it's right by Carol- Caroline Hospice. Foxtail Commons, there's a sign out there that says Foxtail Commons, so that'll be the name of the neighborhood. 260, that's another one that's a built-for-rent community. Then we have Aberly Chase Apartments, this is phase two, this was master planned, and this is their second phase. We've just released their development permit. They were waiting on some HUD money, and with the government shutdown, you know, they knew it. It held them up, but we'll probably see them go under construction, probably in the spring. They have a little bit of site infrastructure to do, not a whole lot, but some.
And that's right there by the existing Village Drive.
That's right, that's right. It will sit between their existing apartments and the Brook Mills, it's that side of the property. And then across from there on Argent Boulevard, we have Cameron Fluffton, which is 259 apartments, and 106 townhouse community. That's in what was known as the Argent Business Park on Argent. That's still under site plan review, we've had to work some things out there, so we're still working on that one. No, that's okay. It was a total of, if you remember, that was a commercial subdivision that was already platted, and it was a total of, I think, 19 lots, possibly 21, but three of the, I think it was a total of 21. Three of the lots have already been sold to someone else. They're gonna take the remainder lots, combine them all together, and reconfigure that. Well, they'll have their townhouse community and then the house. It actually kind of backs right up to Schinger Avenue. Coca-Cola Boggling Warehouse Expansion, they're almost ready to close out that project, they're almost finished. Abbey Glen Community, that's drainage issues, they have some drainage issues there. I have personally been meeting with some of them, Buford Jasper, Watersure Authority has been involved in that. I know that Mr. Kim Earlyon came to a couple of meetings. Let's see, who else? The city of Hardyville has been meeting with them. There's actually a weir that is on Argent Boulevard, where the Walmart is and that pond, and it goes under Argent, and it, there's an outfall structure. But that outfall, that property's a half acre, it's owned by International Paper Company. It's never been maintained, and the whole thing needs to be replaced. And everybody has been trying to get in touch with International Paper, and they will not respond. I've even written them letters. But I've tried to tell the New River Commercial Center, HOA, you know, they probably could go about trying to get a deed to that property, but it's in their best interest to try and take that over so that
So with future Argent Boulevard improvements with roadways that we're looking at, since it's number one on the priority list for road, I would assume there's some right-of-way folks that could probably know somebody that knows somebody that can expedite that, but if they're not going to make this, then that's gonna be a nightmare.
US Army Corps came down here, and they've even looked at it, but that, you know, they could help, they won't do anything unless the county asks them, they'll only work with the county or maybe the city. So it's a matter of, you know, we could probably get a study done through them, but then who's gonna implement that paperwork that may come out of that, you know, so. And then our future projects is possibly Levy Center PDD. Right now, we haven't met with those folks and have asked them to talk to the city of Hardyville about annexation. That is on Highway 315 near Freedom Parkway and Highway 46. It's not far down there, it's just south of the Greater Pentecostal Church.
Freedom Parkway, they just repaved that, that's like the world coast of it, it's terrible, terrible.
The special area plan for Levy. We actually have that in a contract, but it was with the U-Haul Overlay Zoning District. So as soon as we can get done with the U-Haul Overlay Zoning District, we hope to move forward with the special area plan for Levy. We would work with the city of Hardyville and engage the community there. And I think that's a project that we need to try and get underway as soon as possible.
What's a quick definition of special area plan today?
So that is one of the goals of our comprehensive plan. As you can see, Levy community is under pressure for development, and before it loses all of its character, we need to come up with a special plan of how this area will be developed. You know, in the comprehensive plan, we say it should be small scale.
Yeah, because you have commercial, next to residential, and mixed in, that really needs to be straightened out.
I agree. Because we don't, you know, we don't want, it needs to be commercial that could blend in with residential, that's small scale, that supports the rural community and
Who's working on that?
Well, we signed a contract with the consultant who's helping us with the U-Haul Overlay Zoning District. Problem is, we haven't started doing any work because we've been working on it.
Well, let's get the U-Haul Overlay District done. We can do that on December, 1st of December, if you want.
And then Argent Landon, you might hear that referred to as Cypress Harbor, it's out on Pierceburg Road.
And Argent's in Calvin Road, right?
Argent Landon off of Pierceburg, where is?
Yes, if you were coming from Church Road down Pierceburg Road, you would pass Honey Hill Road, Old Charleston Road, where it comes out, it's directly across. When it was first developed, it was developed as Cypress Harbor.
I know exactly where you're talking about.
Thirty-four lots were platted. At one time, there was a big plan for it, but none of that worked out, just that one house or two that was in there. There's three or four houses in there. DR Horton bought the remaining lots, they're out there now doing some land clearing and grading up those lots. They're making some stormwater improvements to the pond, and the owner, Clearview Homes, he retained a portion in the back, and there's like three properties in there. I think he's gonna do about seven, a total of seven, using the three lots they have, and doing a minor to add four lots, some deep, deep water lots. So, and then that, there won't be any land left there, so at least the density's not gonna be crazy. It's only gonna be seven additional. One time, the Johnsons had purchased that, and they called it Argent Landon, but I do know the new, DR Horton, they're gonna refer to it as Cypress Landon. That's really the Sin Brothers Pro views, that's one that's not on this list, it's new. We just received development plans for that, but that's a project out at Cypress Ridge Industrial Park. That's all I have for you.
Quick question, Lisa. How many folks do you have with Ryan in there? But I see a lot of these things coming out, and you got a lot of hammers that'll be swinging soon. I assume it's Ryan and how many others do you have in the building?
We have Ryan's, the building official, John Corwin is our building inspector. We have two permit technicians, then we have a planning and zoning coordinator. She'll do like zoning permits and zoning letters and zoning certificates. And of course, a new planner, so there's a total of seven of us, including me.
How are they keeping up with the building inspections? Because there's, it could be a 30-mile trip from one side to the county to the other if you don't plan your day right.
Yeah, and they, they're real good about coming in and getting their routes together where they're not running all over the county. But so far, we're hanging in there. It may get to the point, again, CSP and Next Chapter hasn't started pulling permits yet. We will, we've already told them there's gonna be a limit to how many they can get in a week, because it takes some time to process, we can't like issue 100 in a week.
But it may be something we need to look at in the future, because that delays trades and commerce.
So that is the one thing we will do if we need, if it gets to the point that we need another inspector, we'll be asking county council to allow us that position. And that's one reason we did get a second permit technician, because we knew this stuff is gonna come, and you know, they go through permitting first.
Yeah, I liked the tour that we took with your group, you and your staff, we went out and looked at the deposed property. What brings that to mind is like the concern of like people trying to get annexed out of something to get a better zoning, you know, something to zone shop us, basically, if that's the right context. But really, the county has no control over these annexation processes. If somebody wants to get out of it, and Hardyville accepts them, or Reginald accepts them, it's a done deal. And they can zone it the way Reginald's zoning it. But I'd like to get a better sense of like all these locations. I don't know if it's better to look at it visually, if you can send us aerial views of these places. I mean, I couldn't find Dull in the Grove for the life of me, that was the one that was part of this extension onto 278. I think, Andy, you might have sent it to me, that gave me a good visual of where I was actually located. I went to Waze, and it didn't even come up on Waze. So your neighbors are, you know, neighbors are always asking, what's going on here, what's going on there? And I just, you know, I don't know what to tell them. Maybe even send them to a website to kind of look to see what's
Sure, we can do an aerial for each of those communities, or, you know, where these projects are, and send that to you and label it.
Yeah, because that would help a lot, just to kind of see, because, I mean, it's shaky, to think of Hardyville. I think, and one of the council members in Hardyville said about just 1,000, maybe 30,000. I mean, it could be exaggeration, but those are in the pipeline to come at some point in the road. They're talking a enormous amount of housing, but anyway, just to kind of get an idea of where these places are going, it would be a big help to be able to aerial. Because I wouldn't have to be too much time consuming to go out and ride around the county to kind of see these places. Anyway, I appreciate that, thanks.
I have no more questions. It'll be Cory. I know it needs a bridge.
For the sake of time, I'll go ahead and start. I'm gonna go ahead, okay, there we go.
Andy, I was trying to increase it, you gonna make it a little bigger?
For the sake of, like I said, I'll just go ahead and start, look at the completed projects. JWR B Field, we're somewhat completed with that, I put it in a completed, but we're still looking at where, we currently just closed our bids for the scoreboards. So we're working on finishing on getting the scoreboards and everything together, and we do got some padding we're gonna be putting around the fence before the beginning of the season, so that way, this spring, when the All-Stars and everything, we can put our bid out, maybe so we can host any regional or any state events. That's one of the things that has been stopping us, we do not have the appropriate scoreboards out there.
Where is this located?
Volunteer Park. The baseball field, baseball complex behind the high school. Yes. Yeah, so once we get those, we'll be able to put our bids out to actually be to host regional and state events for baseball there. The Talbro Community Center has a new fence out there, I don't know who drove past it, and it's over there by the playground and basketball court area. Wagon Branch also has a new fence out front, too, we don't have the woodding structure that really didn't serve any purpose with balls or anything running in the street. Sergeant Jasper got some interior paint done. We got some billards around at Sergeant Jasper, several of both landings. Wagon Branch Park has one, Talbro Park has one. And just really just to keep cars from just parking up on the grass, or parking on the basketball courts, or people just hanging out, not respecting the bombers. Talbro Community Center has got some repairs to the ceiling and everything, we've had chances, been out here lately, you have seen a lot of improvements. Also, our Talbro Community Center, our security camera just went live yesterday, thanks to IT, for finishing that up for me, that's a big help. Sherry Hill Pavilion, we got all the lights out there working. Sherry Hill also has a new big family grill out there, they never had a grill out there. That's one of the things we're working on at all of our parks. When I got here, I think we had three parks that had grills throughout the county. Did we start realizing when people would start leaving their grills, I guess that was a hint for me to start looking at putting some more grills out. We do have four actually in our shop right now, we're gonna be working with Public Works in the next few months to get them out. We had updated signage just around our parks and landings, I don't know if anybody has noticed, we actually have the county logo, they might say park closed from dusk till dawn, no littering. We've got the fishing ones updated, we have a turtle crossing signs out in front of Sergeant Jasper. So things that we got in progress, we're still looking at doing some repairs at Levy, in the smaller amounts. Like right now, we're looking at, we got bids out, right, oh, not a bid out, well, not bids, as we got some quotes coming in for the three decks that we have on the side of the doors. When we came out the fire marshal, this is one of the things we got written up on, so we gotta get those repaired, because Levy kills me. Sergeant Jasper, we're still looking at our boardwalk, we got bids, quotes coming in for bids for the decking at Sergeant Jasper, the gazebo area. I don't think no guy's ever been in the back, if you look at it, it's been worn out. And also, we're looking at some of the trails and the bridges, as our chair has seen firsthand yesterday, some of the bridges that we need to get done. I appreciate it. Sergeant Jasper, we also, we got approved to get our floating dock. I don't know if anybody ever know, we have a dock out there across where our kayaks at, they built a dock, but when we get a lot of rain, it goes underwater, it's no good, so we're actually getting that tore up from Public Works, we're gonna tear it up. We're gonna put a floating dock system out there, because it's also, it's going to hand with what we're doing with the Special Olympics. We signed the MOU with Special Olympics, where they're gonna be doing their kayak training there, instead of at New River, because New River's kind of rough, so they're gonna be coming out there, hopefully in March, be doing their kayak training. We're also looking at doing improvements at Gray's Playground. Gray's, as you know, is very, just have swing sets, so we're looking at clearing out some of the foliage in the back area around Gray's. We just got the second tank put out there, that was 17 grand, I believe it was, because we was having issues with the fire department every three months, I believe, so we got that improved. We're also looking at doing some improvements at the airport soccer field. Soccer was a good success for us this year, we had over 92 kids sign up for soccer, we had 12 teams, and I was one of the coaches, I'm so glad soccer's over until next year. But we're looking at updating Volunteer Park so we can actually use the light. We started at four all the way to 12, so I have four to seven, four to seven years in my mind. So we had the older group, the middle group, and the older group. Next year, we're looking at, we're gonna actually go up to the 13, no, 14 and under. So we're gonna try to get in with Charleston's, with them, so when we do the All-Star, we'll be able to compete with Charleston, because they're trying to compete with Charleston with their soccer program, so we'll have, once our season over, we're going to the All-Star. Oh, trash cans, receptacle replacements, I don't know if you guys know me, I've got a lot of new trash cans at our parks. We don't just have this regular gray trash cans, we actually have them color-coded to wherever our park playground is. Wagon Branch, if you notice, our playground equipment is blue, so if you go there, you go to Sherry Hill, you'll see red or black out there, because the playground equipment is those colors. The boat landing ones are still not the best ones because they become target practice. So we're not gonna put any spending money into boat landings just yet, until we get everything secure the way I need it to be, because if not, it becomes a targeting practice. Some of our future projects we're looking at is a dog park at Sergeant Jasper Park. We have a lot of dog walkers out there, we have a lot of people get off the interstate as they be traveling with their dogs. For us tractor truck drivers, people driving to Florida, they want their dogs to get out, so we're trying to look at and doing a dog park there. We're also looking at basketball court repairs and updates. I don't think our basketball courts have ever been repaired, painted, smoothed, we got crack. That's probably $115,000 estimates I have got so far. And we're looking at some ADA improvements around of all of our centers. And some of our programs, we got going up, we got our Cub Scout. We're actually gonna have the first Cub Scout pack in Jasper County, it's gonna be packed 1912 after the year the county will start it. So we're hopefully to kick that off come January. This, me, Wendy, and Tanya, we're the chairs, we do a lot of paperwork, get all our training. They do not have a pack in Jasper County. Everybody who comes to do a scout island are everywhere, as we do not, and we found that out, I really, we freaked out.
I was, we were troop 243 as a kid here.
Well, see, that was Cubs, I mean, that was boy scouts, it was a troop. But see, you know, we wanna do a troop, but we're gonna start with the Cubs, and hopefully we can keep them, transition them into the troop. Because if we start with a troop, a lot of troop kids will drop off quicker because of, they get into middle school sports and everything else. And also, you gotta keep convincing kids to keep wanting to wear the uniforms. We're also looking at a lot of adult programs that we're got planning. We're looking at trying to do a touch the truck event, if anybody's familiar with that is. That's one of the events we're trying to do, Wendy talked about that, using airport space, bring some fire trucks, dump trucks, like the dump truck gym. They do drop trucks, like just a big white Honda truck, it's real nice. So some events like that to get everybody out, and we're also working on some mural projects with our council. Looking at Wagon Branch, like where the restroom at, create a mural there, so people come down and see something besides just a gray building. And we're also in process of working with the school system right now, with our shared services. Miss Mayback Monday, some other school improvement council, so we're looking at bringing all of our activities over to the schools with user spaces and everything, and blow up our basketball program, because after Wild Jennifer, they're gonna kick us out of Hardyville, and I think our numbers are gonna increase if that will be at Hardyville all day from 8 o'clock to 8 o'clock at night, we don't wanna be doing basketball on Saturdays. Any questions, concerns, or comments?
I got a couple of comments. One, I'd like to give kudos to you and your staff for Sergeant Jasper Park, I frequent the park out there, but the recent, they've just cleaned everything up, and it looks very nice. The trail systems are nice, with the kayaks and canoes and everything. I think it's an untapped gem that a lot of our locals don't even know about in the community right there at Exit 8. And it's, it's an amazing, amazing place out there. But it does make me happy that you're partnering up with the school systems and things to expand some of the things that we can do to the, to the region here. So kudos to you and your staff for, for doing that. And you definitely need a bridge out there, I can
Bridges, bridges. And I just, oh, also forgot, our disc golf course is doing great.
Cory, who does all your marketing, or you, I think you'll need some more social media presence to
That's me in the bed at night. We're trying to, once we get our program coordinator person on, they're gonna be doing more of that. We have Javias now, he's program coordinator, but we brought him in more as athletic coordinator. But once we get that person on, yeah, it's mostly, if I'm out there and I see something, let me take a picture for our phone, videotape, throw some music, throw our logo on it, and push it out there. We do need more, when we do put stuff out there, we get a lot of hits, but we do, but it's just, the time wise, it just, it
Maybe you can get a dodgeball league going, because I got some
You know, we have some adult programs, we're, we're, we're talking about the kickball and the flag football. Only reason we're scared about flag football, I've done flag football, adult leagues before, and then a lot of people call in to work on Monday because everybody got hurt. Yeah, so, just wanna, quick, quick hours, we had 4,000, 4,535 hours of people playing disc golf out there last year. So just wanna get that out there. We're ranked 33rd in the state as disc golf, disc, disc golf course, we're trying to get down to 10. Um, some of our improvements will come with the bridges and all that, and also trying to treat our mosquitoes better out there. Cause once that wet time come, a lot of people walk away. We did get us a mosquito backpack. We have those now. So really at a walk course and spray at a time for big events. Um, we have over forty-four different people came from the United States to play our disc golf. Cause we have a U disc golf tracker. So if you come here, you have disc golf, you're not running U dish, you told all your friends where you from, this and that. So it gives a good tracking of that. It hit over six different countries last year. People came for disc golf.
And have you all ever partnered with like D N R for any like fishing events out there?
Um, yes, they have a, they just got a new educator, um, and I just talked to, D N R just dropped off twenty-one hundred catfish week before last. Um, but they haven't gotten no bass yet, so everybody just wait. Um, so they, so we're, we're looking at scheduling something in March or April. And we're gonna do like my first fish or, you know, fishing derby. We're gonna also connect it with a Cub Scout team well in their area. We already talked to Eric with the scouts about doing that.
I'd like to just echo what, uh, the vice chair said. I think it's, you know, it was a gem. I mean, when I first had seen it, I think you spotted me from the administration building. I was taking pictures and.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and then somebody reported that some stranger was out there taking photographs. But I, I think it's a gem. I don't know if the chamber could get involved. Is chamber only involved with businesses or can they do something to?
They can. They can always promote advance and have after hours events.
Thanks, sir.
Who does the golf course?
Disc golf, Sergeant Jasper.
Sergeant Jasper, is that?
Yes.
Yeah. Congry does that?
You got any question for us? Are you good to go?
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Corey.
Thank you.
Okay. I guess I'm up now. All right, completed projects. The aircraft rescue firefighting arc vehicle, uh, was obtained. It is in service. Um, it has responded to an incident or two at the airport as well as some incidents off airport. Third party EMS billing is up and operational. That went live, uh, September one. The EMS M C billing company actually adopted all new cases from January one, twenty twenty-five forward. Uh, Director Burgess should have received a, a check. I believe it was about a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars this week. Um, from, uh, the efforts from EMS M C thus far. Uh, we continue to track on that. Uh, new fire engines, pumpers, we have received nine out of eleven. Uh, the last two are slated for delivery January twenty twenty-six. Tellman Fire Station replacement, again, that project, uh, under the temporary housing, uh, uh, prototype was, uh, brought to completion. Uh, they are in service and, um, the planning for two prom promise events, those actually, uh, came to fruition. Uh, the students had a lot of, uh, successful, uh, interactions with staff. Uh, fire extinguisher training, we've done three events, internal and external to that. Uh, yesterday, our community risk reduction division, uh, partnered up with Town of Richland Fire Department, uh, at Polaris Tech. And, um, had a very successful event on allowing the children to, uh, become familiar with and utilize fire extinguishers. Uh, the fastest time, uh, for extinguishing a digital fire, uh, through that trainer was seven seconds. So kudos to the, to the student that was able to do that. Uh, second code enforcement and litter control officer has completed the South Carolina Criminal Justice Academy. Uh, and is in service, uh, focusing more on the south end of the county. Uh, between the two that we have, um, in service now, we pretty much drew the Beaufort Jasper Water Canal as the dividing line. One officer is working north, one officer is working south. Uh, we are working through some code enforcement issues, um, as well. The emergency operations plan review and update on that has been complete. Um, let's see, I have my notes on that. Sorry, just bear with me on that. So yes, uh, the emergency operations plan has been reviewed, um, and updated. Uh, we have developed out an emergency management exercise, uh, program. Uh, that is at the South Carolina Emergency Management Division for review, uh, and feedback. Uh, refining our continuity of operations. We have completed that. Uh, we're just going to, um, finish that up. And should have that ready, uh, come January twenty twenty-six for consideration and adoption. Acquisition and deployment of gas monitoring devices, those were procured through a grant. Uh, and as the nine new engines came online, that those, uh, those gas monitors were deployed onto those engines as well. Currently in progress, we've talked about the Kuzahatchie Fire Station. Unfortunately, uh, the property acquisition seems to be one of our major stumbling blocks. Uh, we currently have, uh, property acquisition in negotiations, uh, and moving forward. Phase one environmental should be kicking off very quickly with wetland delineation. And that, that process of acquisition should be coming to a close fairly quickly. Levy Fire Station improvements, uh, there was some insulation, spray foam insulation that was put between the apparatus bay and the living quarters above the apparatus bay. So that helped insulate it down, uh, and made it more manageable for H V A C. And, uh, automatic door openers were installed. That project has come to a close. The only challenge that we have left is the septic system that is down there. Um, we went from a staffing of one when it consolidated into the county fire service to, uh, staffing of four with EMS unit there. Um, so the bids were, were, I believe were, no, we didn't receive any bids on that. We didn't receive any bids on that. So we're working through how to rehabilitate the septic system for that fire station. Uh, code enforcement litter control efforts, uh, the numbers for the year. Let me pull those numbers for you. I apologize for that. Anyway, I'll circle back around to that for the sake of time. Uh, emergency management projects, again, uh, we continue to look at, um, refining coordinate, we've done that. Backup power generation is part of the emergency management projects. So part of the federal government shutdown, uh, has slowed down the hazard mitigation grant program application development. Um, we're looking at, uh, utilizing Polaris Tech as a, uh, public safety, um, shelter. So the, the way to do that is, uh, when Polaris Tech actually was in construction and development with that, we worked hand in hand with them. They did not have the funds to obtain a backup power generator. However, they were able to put in the infrastructure for a transfer switch. Um, at this point, we're looking at writing a grant that will help us acquire a backup power generator for that facility. Um, and then the other projects that we're looking at is backup power generation for convenience and community centers. Uh, as with the winter storm and some of our other tropical cyclones that have impacted our area. Uh, those tend to be a challenge when the, when the power's out. Uh, our citizens still need to be able to get, uh, refuge and clean up their properties. And if we don't have the ability to compact or move those, uh, those containers, then that becomes a challenge for us. And so by at least identifying three, uh, of the convenience centers, south, mid and north, uh, that will help us, uh, bring some continuity of operations back online for our citizens and move forward. Evaluation and consideration of evacuation fall, uh, fallback for emergency operations. Uh, as it stands now, we, we can remain through a upper category three. But if we're looking at taking a direct strike of a cap four or five, uh, we need to be considering, uh, falling back. The, uh, challenge that we are currently facing is that our neighbors also are in that same boat. And, um, have, have been able to monopolize the closest available resources. So it would look at, um, a further inland, which would delay our, our, um, getting back into the county and restoring operations, uh, quicker. Um, but one of the things that we, we have with some of our neighboring is that their public works division on their initiative to push back into the area. They would at least be cutting a, a primary path for us to get back into the county while they're working their way to get back to their jurisdictions. Uh, delayed projects, nine one one communication center renovation, um, as part of the, uh, master plan for the re-investment of rehabilitation and construction. Um, there is an initiative to rehabilitate the emergency services building, which houses the nine one one communication center. So it was almost, uh, pointless for us to really begin that process of, of renovations of the nine one one center, uh, on the forefront of what would be coming in as a rehabilitation of the emergency services. We wanted to roll that up into one package. And then, uh, again, the federal government with, uh, Doge and then the shutdown. And then, uh, pumping the brakes on the brick grant and then saying, okay, well, you can go back forward, uh, mid, um, budgetary cycle. Uh, created a little bit of a challenge for us. We talked about that earlier. But past that, I'll be happy to answer any questions, comments, concerns y'all have.
So that brick, uh, grant, we lose it or use it or lose it by January twenty-seventh, I think you said?
Yes, sir. Twenty twenty-seven. So we have, uh, a year, a year and four months, give or take.
Just wanted to thank you for the tour of the.
Oh, wow. A, a duck on the water. A duck on the water, but the sharks are circling. Yes, yes, yes. It, and I know that you had quite concerns regarding the, the cost of construction. Absolutely agree. Um, I think that there are some challenges that we're working through and, uh, we'll revisit that. Um.
I'm sure you, um, they had the same concerns and challenges I had, just in getting it together and figuring out all that thought stuff that you had. Okay, that's what I'm saying.
I like it. Uh, I do have a question for you. Um, hurricane season is over, but we have this new season called snow season that we, we recently learned about. What are they forecasting this year?
I honestly have not had a moment's time to really dive into the winter forecast. Uh, there has been some talks about a repeat of a snow event. Um, but we'll have to see what those forecasts unfold. With hope, uh, I, some, some, I think it was a couple of weeks ago, we saw D O T running around with snow plows on the, on front of their truck. Um, I think that they were, they were doing driver's training pertaining to that. But, uh, again, we only have two snow plows, um, assigned to the D O T Jasper section shed. Uh, one of the things for our ambulances is that we have a, uh, a full bumper replacement that has a class three hitch on the front. Uh, we've had discussions on whether or not we should put snow plows on the front of an ambulance. I'm not quite sure how that would work out. But, um, you know, there, there is always that possibility, uh, preliminary cost on that was about six thousand dollars to do that.
Hopefully we don't get any snow. That was way worse than the. Yes, and that was where I was going next. We, we briefly touched on it and I don't know whose report it was, but trying to, I know in the past we discussed some of the areas being warmest centers, maybe some of the community centers, but they lack the generators to power them.
Right.
What are, have we looked at some ways to overcome that? Maybe we support them?
That was, that was part of, and I, I apologize for that, cause the convenience and the community centers were, uh, things that we're looking at under hazard mitigation planning grants. Um, the, a- again, when we start looking at federal dollars and putting shovel to dirt, that's where we start getting into archives and Bureau of Indian Affairs. Uh, environmental justice, uh, i- it, it becomes a real challenge. So you're absolutely correct on that. Uh, portable generator sets tend to be, um, a viable option. Um, I know that Billy Staley with Orangeburg County was able to be successful in that. I've reached out to him. Hopefully I'll hear back on how he navigated that, that water on getting portable. Sure.
Or do we have any thing to maybe state procurement or any, that we could rent one like in a moment's notice from somewhere else to hook up?
There are contracts that we can implement through Blanchard Caterpillar.
Okay.
Um, again, and this, I think this is where, um, Director Burgess and I would, would be able to evaluate that down. Uh, utilizing a, a twelve month span of the electricity that is utilized by the community centers or convenience centers, uh, will help us identify out what that peak demand is and be able to size a generator that would be, uh, capable of doing that. But the other side to that is, is acquiring, um, transfer switches, uh, and getting that put on to the community centers. And, um, manual transfer switches are easy, um, they're cost effective. But again, you have to wait for the power to go out and then you have to go out. You have to do, you, you gotta go through the, the entire sequencing of, of transferring that load, um, versus an automatic transfer switch. So there, there's a couple of options that we can evaluate on it.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right.
All right.
Uh, I see we have human resources and detention center, and I know Nicole is out. Okay. Mag or? Yeah, we've just recently utilized them. We're going through that now.
Okay, you have to, um, uh, just to give a sense of what the market rates are. Attention set aside, so we just issued a, uh, thirty-five, uh, so, um, kind of to discuss that.
Charged. And so that has included, of course, and those of the architects is continuing to work on a report to try to give you an outline of exactly what needs to be fixed in the facility. Try to run some ongoing issues.
Mr. Bostick, no pressure, but we're trying to get out of here by four.
All right, so the goal is to make it out by four. I need ten minutes, that's it. So we're gonna run through information technology and GIS. Here's the good stuff. PRTC overhaul completed. Asset management is still a work in process. The upgrade to the county email server is ninety-eight percent complete, so we can keep moving on that one. Scanning services for HR and, which is a digitizing project. We have not completed that yet. We're actually doing some work on how we're gonna complete the process, what kind of manpower it's gonna take. So that's gonna require a couple more meetings and possibly come before council for a little bit of money. Just prepare y'all to see me. No pressure. All right, detention center rewiring, that is complete. GIS server update is in process now. Our expected goal of completion for that is the end of December. Cyber security program, we have hired that individual. They are actually in training as we speak. Antivirus deployment is constant. Every time a new PC or piece of equipment is implemented, we have to make sure it's covered. The seizure zone, it's an ongoing process right now. We have been found noncompliant. We have a meeting on tomorrow to negotiate those terms and see about remediating that situation. Airport cameras, I think we pretty much got all the damaged ones replaced, so he should be good over there. Next generation nine one one is part of the GIS server update. That should be completed hopefully by the end of December. Also, scanning services, when we say scanning services, this is the rest of the county as far as digitizing little documents, papers. We'll be working with department heads to find out what do they need as far as storage, how we will put that program together. And then we will be getting with lovely Kim for finance to see what plans she have for funding for us. Our goal is to do, set up something similar to what Buford County has. In the long run, that will be more feasible for us because one thing, we're going offsite. As you grow, you spend more money in the cloud. If you own your cloud, it's a lot cheaper. That is pretty much the new gasoline as far as IT is concerned. We charge by the kilobyte. We are in the process of trying to get something where you'll be able to pull your own archives yourself that will alleviate us from being involved also. The only catch with being able to pull your, be able to view it. But due to certain legal ramifications, you'll still have to turn in a request if you need to put it on, drive it, remove it from the facility or turn it over to another entity. Little bit of a per situation, so we're discussing. Hopefully, we can come to a resolution on it. Anyone have any questions for me, concerns? Sure. Global information system. For us, we map the county, we map developments, housing projects. We do addressing for nine one one. So let's say you bought a piece of land and you want to build houses on it. You would get it divided. We'll work with the assessor. We'll figure out how to tax you into. We do it all day. It's constant every. We had the full advisory suite. Now, what we do now is we're actually in the process of working on some apps that you can get with a load on your phone to watch live data. We are gonna start implementing the first of the year. We're gonna be getting with some individuals to do like what we do with the new complexes add. You know, they have the groundbreaking and the planer and have the drone flyer. We're gonna use that footage to somewhere else, mass and stuff. So what it used to look like before and what it looks like now. Yeah, I'm gonna check it out. You can build, you can build collaboration rooms inside Microsoft, share that stuff out. Get with Warren and work on that.
I've got a quick question. I've had a lot of complaints from constituents about the user ship of the website to make it more user friendly. Have you guys looked at that? Personally, I've not been on it in the last few months, so maybe y'all have done something, but.
We have done a lot when Councilman.
Or Zilla?
No. Kim got involved. We actually started making some changes there based off of recommendations he brought forth. What we also did is we implemented a suggested system that says website, welcome, that's important. Click the link, you email your concern, we go and examine it, discuss it, work through some individuals to see if it's gonna make it more streamlined or is it causing more difficulty to use. Some things do change because sometimes it's better to just click a button and go right there. Sometimes when you click a button and go right there, you may miss something that needs to be seen before you get there. So you do have site parts of the site like that where if you click the button, you still need to be able to read what's going on before you go and actually do the process.
That's kind of one of the problems was they say they gotta click here, go there, and then they gotta go.
I think, I think they're talking about them. A lot of that was, we had a lot of issues with the links for the tax, tax, tax department for the treasurer. He changed links on three different occasions. The catch to that is we can update the link on our website, but you have to wait for Google to do an update too before the new link goes live. So it could be anywhere from twenty-four to forty-eight hours before Google picks up the new link. And what was happening when he updated the link, this is when we get a bunch of emails that, oh, when we clicked the link, we couldn't pay because it was saying it's not functioning. Well, if you change the link, it looks like it's a broken page until Google finishes their update. We turn in a link change to Google. But the problem is that if you change it three times in the same month, Google puts you on the back burner. And see, with that particular situation, we had changed the link probably four times for you in one month's time. He put us a new link in, then he decided to go back to the old.
Yeah, what I'll do from now is tell the constituent to send me an email and I'll forward it. You know?
Would you be willing to, like, if we had like a, maybe like an informal workshop where folks with the website and different things to, for suggestions or to work with just to make it overall user friendly? Because that success leads to multiple successes and anything we can do to, to that would be, would be great. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you. You made it.
Absolutely, you can proceed on. When is our comp plan reset? Twenty-eight is when it rewrites? So I believe if we kinda start along those and kinda preemptively start getting some things strategically that mirror the comp plan and pick some things that are easy, a little bit harder and kinda prioritize those things to chip away from some of our goals and things that would be.
Every time their comments got in the report without too much sipping or screaming. So I think you guys are gonna be very good at that and provide input into that. So that comes out to be your, a community plan, but also your.
And I think that strategic plan doesn't need to be, we get a hundred ideas, it doesn't need to be a hundred bullet marks. We need to pick ten good ones and then, and then if we accomplish all those, then we can pick the next exact example. Because a lot of times you get lost in the minutia of all, but yes, they're all ideas.
That's all we have.
Well, Councilman Eas, do you have anything?
No, I was great this last year.
I mean, overall?
Overall staff, everybody, what do you?
Well, I mean, I gotta make it complicated. I get it, given the climate and direction. If you look at our resume, what we've accomplished, how we think if you did it to a really high performing city, you know, something nearby, can you say on its average? But the climate we've been in has been very, a lot of new, a lot of learning and trusting, all that stuff. A lot of heavy political file or influence. And so given all that, I'm gonna give those a solid.
I'd say give us a D plus.
D plus?
Yeah.
I really appreciate your support and the support of the staff. You've gotten all the right people doing the right things and everybody's doing their best. Let's all just stay patient and continue to stay focused on it and continue to do good things.
Yeah, thank you, Maggie, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Senator.
Yeah, I just wanna just wish everybody a nice day. We have so many families and boys listening up there in the radio world and I think TV world or whatever. The other, the thing that I had said in the beginning when I first got on the council was that we met in that back room and we talked about orientation. And you know, it was important to me to get as much information as I could. But I'll say it again, my feeling is that we make policy, you know, as we can, so. But the heavy lift that the people out there, here in this building and outside this building that are doing the work and making sure that we're, we're asking for, it's put into, into reality. So I just wanna say I do appreciate that. I just know that I know that this hard work being done, as much as I feel like it's been an overwhelming process in the last four months. I mean, you've got the work to do, you've gotta produce and it's, I really appreciate it. And everybody does that was here before and, you know, in this room right now, especially Juan, who's still alive. Take good care of the council, I gotta say. Thank you all for all the.
Well, I'd like to thank staff for giving us all this information. And this is definitely just a mid-year checkup, see where we're going. Hopefully in January, we can begin the new budgeting process. We just got our budget in process, but time flies if you have a plan, yes. But I think we need to move forward on that with our priorities and look at that and that's with forecasts and see exactly where we are with the reassessments, see what we can do to, to do right by the taxpayers and see if there's anything that we can do to start producing mileage if possible. I do think that if we can get the line item budget, and we have the line item budget, but a little bit more definitive, a little easier, I think we can work with finance and get that there, especially breaking the CIP out and being its own budget in the, in the back of the budget that makes sense with the projects. We look forward to getting these things going. Again, I believe twenty twenty-six is going to be a very busy year. And you're still seeing unprecedented growth in our community, especially with some of the infrastructure improvements, not only the federal, but state and some of the local ones that are happening with the roadways. And I think this is what our thirty-fifth non-traditional scheduled secondary type meetings or workshops or whatever this is throughout the year that you add on to our regular scheduled council meetings and those other ancillary meetings that we have in between all of these. So we have been a very busy working council. I've been a good supportive staff helping us with that because I can tell you, it's almost like working two full-time jobs with council and my full-time job. But I think we're going in the right direction. We've had a lot of compliments with a lot of things we're getting accomplished. And I'm hoping.
And as we get towards that mid-year, in January, we get the budget rolling out. We've got a bunch of meetings week after next with some other pretty important issues with shared services as well as the U-Haul district and some other things that we're, we're looking at. we're looking at and hopefully, the rest of the year will continue to kind of, kind of go out. We definitely, next week, hopefully, everybody enjoys the holiday, take time to be with your friends and family or whomever, and, and the week after that, we'll come back prepared to work because I think we have a meeting just about every day that week. So, again, yeah, so thank you all. We look forward to taking some of the things that we've talked about today, putting them in a document and, and working with them and seeing where we go from here. Does anybody else have anything for the greater good? I think it would be appropriate to adjourn. Thank you all.